Call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, September 9, 2024 at 5:30 in the afternoon. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santayanes.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dunton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
Mr. Smoot, closed session items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council will recess to closed session for item 3A as listed on the agenda.
Do we have any recusals or conflicts? Nope. Public comments, anyone intends to like to speak on the closed session item? No one in the audience. Recession to closed session. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, September 9, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We are reconvening from closed session where there is no reportable actions. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santayanes.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dunton.
Aye, here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
Tonight, I'll be offering the invocation and that'll be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance. And PJ Milano, Director of Parks and Recreation, will be giving us the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening now to give you thanks for all the blessings you've bestowed on our city. Be with us as we deliberate those items that are in front of us, give them the wisdom to do what's the right thing for our city. We want to always remember our first responders, the sheriffs, deputies, and the firefighters that protect our community. We also want to remember all those in the armed services throughout the country and throughout the world that so we can be sleep protected every night. Be with us throughout the evening and let us be of calm heart and sound mind. In his name we pray, amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. The 26th Annual Bellflower Car Show will be taking place on Saturday, October 5, 2024, and starts at 2:00 and it goes till 6:00 PM in the evening. Come enjoy a great afternoon of family fun and see over 200 classic cars and trucks. There'll be great food from local restaurants, there'll be food trucks and live music. Entry is free and so open to the public. For more information, you can visit Bellflower Car Show event website and you can find that at www.bellflower-car-show.com. So with that, we will have Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, the 2024 Bellflower State of the City presentation will be held Thursday, October 3 of this year at 11:30 AM at the Main Event Center. The State of the City presentation provides an overview and an update on the city's recent accomplishments, headlined by the mayor, Dan Coops himself. And we'll talk about his future goals in the city. And we are excited to share that amazing progress that we made the past year and what is about to come here to Bellflower. Tickets are on sale and through the day of Wednesday, September 11. More information regarding this event and how to purchase tickets, you can call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city of Bellflower is in conjunction with the Lakewood Sheriff's Station is giving away steering wheel locks, devices for Hyundai and Kia owners while supplies last. The steering wheel lock were provided by Hyundai International to help to combat high vehicle thefts of commonly stolen vehicles. Those vehicles which are eligible include 2011 to 2022 Hyundai and Kia models with a E-key ignition. The free steering wheel lock giveaway is open to all residents. There is a non-pre-registration required. It is also a first come, first served basis while supplies last. Only one steering wheel lock will be given per Hyundai or Kia vehicle. For more information, call Bellflower Sheriff Substation at 562-925-0124. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I see you have affirmation from your family as they yell out during the what you're reporting. So glad you're here. Councilmember Sunny Santayanes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites the business community to its Business-to-Business Castle Connections event on Thursday, next Thursday, September 19 from 11:30 AM to 12:30 PM. The Chamber will also be hosting its monthly morning mingle on Tuesday, September 24 from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santayanes. Councilmember Wendy Morse.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you a Bellflower business owner or operator who has something special to celebrate? Have you received an award, preparing for a special event, or recently remodeled? If so, share your news with the city's Economic Development Department at economic underscore D E V at bellflower.org to be featured in the Bellflower East Citizen Newsletter. Economic Development staff also visit businesses to learn more about their products and services and to build a rapport with the business community. To request a business visitation and/or to be featured in the East Citizen Monthly Online Newsletter, call 562-804-1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. So at this time, we're going to make an award because we're going to honor Hispanic Heritage Month. Is the recipient available? Has she come? There you are, great. So staff, would you direct her over here to our riser? And we'll make the presentation with my colleagues here.
You're the star.
You're the star.
Thank you.
This television, coast to coast. All right. Is this working? Yes. So as I mentioned earlier, this is Hispanic Heritage Month and we're celebrating that in the city of Bellflower. And we have a proclamation that we're going to read parts of. And I'm going to give this to you to bring to your place of work. How's that sound? All right. In 1968, Congress created Hispanic Heritage Week. In 1968, 1988, Hispanic Heritage Week was extended to a month-long observance and it starts from September 15 to October 15. So we're right on time here. Since the 16th century, the Hispanic influence on American Southwest has been evident in language, celebrations, architecture, agricultural, and art. The knowledge of Hispanic contributions to our society can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights and the great strides we have made on all walks of life, including higher education, government, religion, and in programs aimed to eliminate the barriers of inequality. Bellflower residents are encouraged to make Hispanic Heritage Month a time rededication to the principles of unity, respect, and trust for the betterment of our community. Therefore, I, Dan Coops, it says Sunny here, but I'll substitute here. He does speak Spanish, so it's okay. But therefore, I speak on behalf of Sunny Santayanes, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim September 15, October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. And it's signed by the mayor, Dan Coops. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Wendy Morse, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and the always mayor, Councilmember Sunny Santayanes. And at this time, I'd like to invite you to say a few words to those that are watching.
We've been doing business in Bellflowers for almost 20 years.
Tell us the business you're in.
Niños Latinos Unidos. We are a foster family agency and also adoption agency. It's a pleasure for us to have the business here. We've been very well through here in this city and I really appreciate that.
No, I'm glad you're here. And they do a great work. They're located on Alondra, near the corner of Clark and Alondra. And they've been there many years.
Yes.
And you're an instrumental part of that. So we chose you to be the recipient of this year's Heritage Award.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to all of you. Thank you.
Now we're going to take some pictures. You're looking, read it, Sunny on there.
I was in trouble.
Must use last year's model.
Whoops.
Use last year's certificate?
Forgot to update it.
No. What an influence you have. All right. Public comments, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
So now's your chance to come forward and please sign in. And you got three minutes to talk to us and we'll hear what you have to say.
Hello, council. My name is James Cody Burkey and I am a proud resident of Bellflower. One of the things, Mayor Coops, you've mentioned in the past is in some ways, Bellflower still has that sense of being like a little Mayberry community tucked away here in Los Angeles. And to that point, a bunch of my neighborhood members are here because we get to enjoy that every day.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. So what brings me here is that we've, in our little neighborhood, we've experienced an uptick over the last year or two in gang-related activity. And that came to a culmination for us about 10 days ago. Friday before last, while we were playing in our front yard, a young man was shot. We wanted to voice our concern with the level to which the gang-related activity has come literally onto our front porches. And we not only want to point out that this is an issue that is very problematic for us and our families, but also come with some potential solutions and offer an opportunity for us to align ourselves with the city council and coming up with solutions to address this issue. Certainly, we would hope that there'd be a carrot and stick approach perhaps where on the one hand, we have increased enforcement of public safety and law enforcement and at the same time, take advantage of some additional gang intervention programming that is available in other areas utilizing whether it's Homeboy Industries or Project Kinship based out of Orange County. They work hard to understand and integrate within the populations of vulnerable kids here in Bellflower or Wood. And they're experts in these populations and they've already done this in other areas. We also, in related, but tangentially related ideas, looking at design solutions of ways that we can deal with the vulnerable intersection. We're at Ardmore and Maple, for example. Looking at traffic calming. I know the neighborhood that I grew up in dealt with gang issues at one point and we installed some islands and I don't know if that was it, but that was definitely part of a landscape of solutions that really reduced gang violence over the long haul. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Mr. Burkey, I appreciate you coming forward and explaining what and because Victor lives in your neighborhood there, he had all of us notified within 10 minutes of what had occurred. So we're very sensitive to what goes on in that neighborhood for a lot of reasons. We all have Mr. McNerny who sits over here and he's going to offer some solutions. And if you want to meet with him out in the hallway, we're going to come up with some ideas that might make a difference. And we can certainly concentrate on getting more patrols over there as a beginning. And maybe you could tell him whether or not there's a particular household over there that's more problematic than the next or if you've got some neighborhoods that have changed in some way. You know, how is it that that safe? You know, Maple Street has always been one of the greatest streets in town and always was. And it used to be when I was a kid, every house was decorated from Ardmore all the way to Woodruff. Every house had decorations on it. That was that kind of camaraderie. And I'd like to see if we can't reinvent Neighborhood Watch or something over there. And I'm sure Victor would love to see more involvement in the community around your house so you would identify those that really don't belong there and we can call them out on it. But Mr. McNerny, if you'd like to give any testimony, I'm certainly welcome to that before you engage the Codys. Our Cody Burkey. Go ahead, please.
Absolutely. I wasn't sure if you wanted me in the hallway first or out here first.
Yeah, why don't you do it and so you'll know that we're attentive to this.
So absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, I was prepared to talk about the issues described already here. Cody's completely correct. There's been a significant increase in gang activity within the city, which I'm sure a lot of people are aware of. Part of the reason why we redeployed Southwest Patrol to be focusing more on homeless things was to focus more SAO time on gang issues. And we're still only a few months into that swing, so it'll take some time for that to sort of the fruits of our labor to come out from that. But specifically, the gang issues, people are being arrested going back since June. Again, we really only have one main gang in town, which is our Colonial Flores Gang, CF Gangsters for short. Everyone probably sees a lot of the graffiti in town. Going back to June, we had one arrested for possession of a firearm. In July, another one arrested for driving a stolen vehicle. In August, we had four people arrested, one for vandalism, one for attempted murder, and two more for vandalism. So arrests are occurring and we know who these individuals are. It just takes time to catch them doing things wrong and then putting together good cases with the investigations and then getting DA's office to actually follow through on their charges. But right now, at least what is being done in the interim is Southwest Patrol is picking up their visual patrols in the area to hopefully deter future incidents from occurring. There are active LASD investigations, which I can't speak too much on of what's going on, especially related to the shooting that just occurred. There's an active investigation which they're following up on numerous leads. We have also, with the Sisters of Public Works, now have a weekend crew to deal with the graffiti incidents, which we have on weekends. So hopefully, all this being interjected and a lot of this is freshly new stuff within the last few weeks to months that the city council here has approved to put in place. So we're hoping as time goes on, we'll start to see the fruits of that labor take effect and hopefully reduce these issues that we're experiencing in town.
Thank you for the report. Victor, would you like to give a report as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend Public Safety Director, interim director, Brian McNerny on that. We have noticed an increase in patrol in the area. But I definitely want to bring our attention back to an item that Mr. Cody Burkey mentioned. He mentioned two programs, two organizations, Homeboy Industry and then Project Kinship. I think those are two agencies that we should at least entertain in having a conversation with, engaging them, just like we did with Mercy House and other professionals in the homeless area.
Okay.
When I read the, you know, when we read the report, I think we all probably came to the similar conclusion. These are teens. And I personally believe that, and I think we all would agree with this, at that age in your life, you're probably the most moldable and pliable and can learn. Can, you know, unfortunately, maybe they've gotten into an unfortunate situation. They're going down the wrong path. And I think we can maybe with programs like these to help steer and redirect that energy into maybe programs like Key Club or, you know, Key Leaders or things of that nature. You get what I'm saying?
Sure.
These aren't, you know, seasoned adults with established habits. I think there's still time. I think we all know people that have changed their lives one way or another. And so I hope that we would take that, this opportunity and see the silver lining and engage in a fruitful conversation with those two agencies and see what we can come out with it.
So Brian, I think that would be something to add that to your list of things that you already are doing. But we're going to try something a little different. Let's see if we can encourage that. And I think what Mr. Sanchez says about these being moldable young adults, we have to capitalize on that. You know, Colonial Flores for years was something that's been in vexation in Bellflower and they seem to have been making a resurgence. So it'd be good for us to try to work with this as best we can, as quickly as we can.
Right. And to Councilmember Sanchez's point, that is an untapped source that we have not looked into yet, just trying some sort of outreach. So that will probably behoove us to look into that and see where that can lead us to.
No, we're building that new facility in Sims Park, which would be a natural to try to entertain that, encouraging individuals that are at risk. It's kind of in the neighborhood what we're talking about, but it's for the whole city. But we're going to have a facility that's meant to be used in a productive way and this could certainly be a basis for that. So again, that's in the future, but we've got an immediate need. And as I said, and we all know, every one of us is up here only because we strive to keep the city safe. I mean, we all work on the basis of public safety. If you don't feel safe in which the town you live, then why would you want to live there? So we really take that part of our purview vigorously. And with your help and with the help of the local residents, we can try to put this behind us. But it's just a tragedy when people live on Maple and Ardmore there for years and never had any kind of occasion to be threatened and here it happens 10 days ago. So we need to try to help them and the rest of our community and maybe we can use that area as an example of what we can do throughout the town. So thank you, Brian. Yes, sir.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Mark Tigalar. And I just had a couple additional things I wanted to mention. Nice to see you up there. So yeah, in addition to what Cody brought up, I'd like to just second that. My wife has, that intersection is a spot where we walk up and down very often. And she has told me recently that she's unwilling to walk, you know, the neighborhood anymore. So especially at night. So it's just a personal anecdote to make it real to that story.
Do you think that 7-Eleven on the corner is a concern?
Yeah.
Circle K.
Absolutely.
Circle K, whatever it is.
Yeah, the Circle K. And that's, I mean, that's where most of the graffiti is too. And I appreciate how quickly, I don't know what department it is that.
Public Works.
Yeah, that paints over it.
They're doing that seven days a week now.
Yeah. And that's, right? What a horrible waste of resources, right?
Oh, we spent a fortune for that.
Yeah, so. But there's got to be something else, right? It's, was it Einstein that said doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a change is the definition of insanity, right?
I suggest they cut their index finger off so they can't hit the button on the.
Yeah. I've suggested that as well.
I think that ship sailed.
So in addition to that, a couple other things I wanted to just get on the record here is a couple of months ago, I came also just to talk about the opportunity of being able to submit public comments through maybe email or another without having to come here at night. I was just telling Ivan, I'm frustrated because I just worked a full day and I wanted to go home and see my kids and see them off to bed, but I'm here talking about gangs instead. You know, and that's just frustrating. I would love to be able to maybe Zoom or something, make that available. I think that would get more engagement from the city, from its residents because there's a lot of people that double, two working households, right? It's hard to get here every night for these meetings. And then also, I've also had $10,000 stolen from the post office in Bellflower. I'm sure you guys are aware of it.
We've all been hit.
Okay, I went, yeah, I wanted to see if the city, if the city can do anything about that. I know it could be a federal, I'm sure the FBI or the OI, I think it's the OID or the, somebody's involved in that. But I went and spoke to the postmaster himself and it just seems like what can be done? So just wanted to get on the record, see if there's anything the city can do about that. And then second, the traffic calming measures. Just a week ago, maybe five days after that shooting, there was a SUV doing circles in that same intersection.
We've got the video of that as well, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, whether it's the islands or whatever, I don't know. I would just maybe piloting a test of that, right? Instead of just a survey or a study, maybe a piloting and see if it would work. So thank you.
Thanks for the testimony. Anyone else? All right, so that will get past public comments and move on to ordinance and resolutions. Mr. Smoot, 12A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have Travis take this one quickly if you don't want.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is an ordinance which would amend Section 2.16.010 of the Bellflower Municipal Code to provide a salary adjustment for members of the city council. And this would be following the next general municipal election, which is on November 5, 2024. So as brief background here, the salary for members of the city council is established by ordinance in the Bellflower Municipal Code. The specific section is 2.16.010 subsection B. In June 2022, the city council voted to increase its salary to $1,616.46 per month. And this took effect after the November 2022 general municipal election. And in accordance with California law, cities with populations between 75,000 and 150,000 may increase the city council salaries to a maximum of $1,900 per month. And this was actually following legislation that went into effect January 1, 2024. So this specific legislation was SB 329. So the item before you tonight, as I mentioned, it would be to increase the city council salaries. And this would be by $113.15 is what staff's proposing. And this would be per month and it's from 161646 to 172961. So that's $1,721.61. And in addition to this, this would be, or not in addition, but this is just to add a point of clarification here, this is a proposed increase of 7%. So this actually aligns with the approximate salary adjustments that was granted to city employees over fiscal years 2023 to 2024 and 2024, 2025. So happy to answer any questions that the council may have. But this item tonight, what we're recommending is to read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1436. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item.
Okay, thank you for the report. Mr. Sunny Santayanes, do you have any questions?
Sure.
Pretty straightforward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr., thank you so much for your presentation. As you pointed out, the city council gets a whopping $1,600 a month and some change. And part of the discussion here is that the 7% increase is what you're proposing, which aligns with the increase that the employees receive in 2023, in 2024, and 2425. So how did the employees get the 7%, did they get the 7% increase in one year or how did it go? Can you explain that?
Sure. So for the first fiscal year of 2023, 2024, it was a 3.2% increase. And that was based off of CPI from May to May. And then this second fiscal year of this budget, it was a 3.9% increase. So it was about 7.1% is what the employees got.
Seven point, well, which could be more? Because if you compound it, right?
Correct.
Which could be more than?
Yes.
Okay, do you have some kind of estimation in terms of the actual effective rate?
That's what I was just calculating. If you calculated that out at the compounded interest, if you will, of the couple of years, you're actually lower by about $4 than otherwise you would have been, so.
So it would be more than?
Would have been 1733 and change instead of 17.
And this will be, so basically, this is two years behind actually.
Yeah, that's a fair point, actually. This is in arrears where employee adjustments would have been in real time.
And this will be effective 20?
By state law, any adjustment that the council approves cannot take effect until after an election when new council members take their oath of office and start their terms.
So it will be December of '24?
Correct.
2024, okay. All right, very good. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I felt Councilmember Santayanes had a couple of questions that we needed to just make sure on. You know, I think if I may provide comments on this more so than a question. You know, I think, if I may provide comments on this more so than a question, you know, I think it's clear that all of us don't do this for the salary that it comes with, if you can call it a salary, a stipend. We do it because we are longtime committed members of this community. We drive around everywhere and we go to our residents' homes, we go meet them at the sites of complaints, we make ourselves available. And I know that we all put in, you know, 20 to 30 hours sometimes a week. And so, you know, I just want to say that because while normally we only give a chance to do this every two years, yeah, I think I'm okay with this proposal, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Wendy Morris, any questions or comments?
Um, I don't, Sunny touched on what I was going to ask, and it's not, it's $100. It's not really that.
Okay.
Seem unfair in a sense, I guess, or unrealistic, not unfair.
It's cost of living, basically.
It's cost of living. You spend $100 going to the grocery store, let alone what you take leaving the grocery store.
All right, Mr. Dutton.
Yeah, I'll throw my two cents in. Yes, we're always running behind on the stipends, and we did get behind quite some time in 2009, 10, when we started taking pay cuts even, which we, when the employees went furlough and they lost 10% of their wages, we did the same thing. And then we didn't take it back for a long time. And then we figured we better catch up because every other city around was doing the max. And we've never done the max, the max is 10% for State California. And we're doing 3.5% a year, and to add up to 7 for a two-year adjustment. And again, we're taking this in the rears and we're still behind. But at some point, you have to offset costs, and we all have costs. Every one of these, my colleagues up here are going and writing checks for donations to service clubs and the chamber and all kinds of wonderful things that this community does because it's worth it. And we drive around, we don't get a car allowance. We drive around, use our own gas, our own time to go to events. And this just kind of helps put money back in the family kitty. And with that, I think it's just basically trying to not let it get too out of far away, out of reach, you know, with other cities. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dutton. And that's probably the, one of the most important things that was said from Mr. Dutton, and I'll bring it up. All of us donate most of this money back to the city. It goes to Little League, it goes to the Girl Scouts, it goes to the Chamber, you name it. There always seems to be a need. And so we're just kind of a pass-through. None of us are being able to say that that is why I'm there. And as Victor indicated, it's an honor to serve, and we don't do it for the money. But we want to try to keep these amounts that we do receive that somewhat equal to what our surrounding cities do, just for equality. But I'd invite anybody that wants to to give testimony on this item. If you have a different viewpoint than what we've shared here, we're certainly willing to hear it. All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to introduce, waive further reading, introduce ordinance number 1436, an ordinance amending Section 2.16.010 of the Bellflower Municipal Code to provide a salary adjustment for members of the City Council following the next general municipal election and superseding ordinance number 1414.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinez, supported by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Motion passed, 13A, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Corpoose is going to come up and present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The overarching goal of the Building and Safety Division is to ensure that development occurring within the city is done in an orderly, safe, and efficient manner while providing unparalleled customer service and support for residents and businesses in the city. As with any development, or excuse me, as with any city, development and redevelopment activities fluctuate over time and code requirements and standard shift and change along with them. The city's services must also adjust to meet the changing needs and requirements of the building community as a whole to ensure Bellflower remains competitive in attracting and retaining new development and redevelopment. For some history regarding the building and safety services throughout the years, since the city incorporated in 1957 until 1997, the city's building and safety services were provided by the County of Los Angeles. To provide better customer service at reduced cost, the City Council approved a transition to a combination of both in-house staff and contracted staff in 1997. The city's building and safety services have been provided on a contract basis as follows. From 1997 to 2000, the services were provided by TransTech Engineers. From 2000 to 2006, services were provided by P&amp;D Consultants. From 2006 to 2020, services were provided by Broadspec. And from 2020 to present, services are provided by SafeBilt, also known as InnerWest. To note in this timeline, essentially from 2000 to 2020, for 20 years, the building and safety operations were essentially provided by the same company, with Mr. Steve Patterson serving as the city's building official. Mr. Patterson was Vice President of P&amp;D Consultants and the President of Broadspec. And in 2020, Broadspec was acquired by a company called SafeBilt, who is our current service provider. Also, in 2019, fire services were incorporated. In terms of the current service levels, on average, there are roughly 20 daily inspections, 38 monthly plan reviews, and 1,092 permits issued annually. In terms of the current agreement, since 2006, Broadspec and subsequently SafeBilt's agreement with the city provided for a monthly retainer or a flat fee for services. So for, regardless of the services, whether those services are high or low, the same flat fee is charged to the city. Since 2006, there have been 10 amendments to the original agreement that have been executed. These included adjustments to staffing levels, additional services, hourly rates, and the assignment of the agreement from Broadspec to SafeBilt. The current agreement provides for six contract staffing consisting of a part-time building official, a full-time plan checker, two full-time building inspectors, and two full-time permit technicians. Since 2019, the agreement was supplemented to add fire, plan review, and inspection services. These services are not specifically called out in the agreement and are paid as additional services. Following the replacement of the city's longtime building official and with high staff turnover, the city began to receive complaints related to the plan check process and building services. The current service provider in the city identified a backlog of more than 37 plan check reviews. In early 2024, staff received, or series of, excuse me, staff requested a series of regular meetings with SafeBilt, our current service provider, to discuss the status of services and address complaints. Staff decided to proceed with releasing an RFP for competitive bids for several reasons as follows. The first one, the last competitive RFP process was 27 years ago. This was in 1997 with a change from the county to TransTech Engineers. Fire services provided is not specified in the current agreement. Several personnel changes have impacted the level of service provided to the city. And the city aims to streamline, improve, and modernize the building and safety and fire services. On March 25th, 2024, the City Council authorized an RFP to seek competitive bids for complete in-house Building and Safety Division operations and fire, plan, check, and inspection services. An RFP was made available for 30 days, advertised on the city's website. And a notice regarding the RFP was sent out to several vendors providing these services, including our current service provider. Six proposals were received from the following companies. InnerWest Consulting Group, a SafeBilt company, our current service provider, Willdan Engineering, Bureau Veritas North America Inc., Fourleaf Inc., TransTech Engineers Inc., and CSG Consultants Inc. City staff evaluated the proposals and determined that the level of staffing and the cost proposals differed tremendously. The cost proposals varied between $864,000 to $2.3 million, with some companies proposing additional costs such as taking a percentage of permit fees or plan check fees collected. On July 8th and July 9th of 2024, interviews were held with all six companies. To better normalize the actual cost for services and to give a quote-unquote apples-to-apples comparison between the proposals, each company was asked to complete a sample worksheet that consisted of a set number of personnel, hours, hourly rates, and the total costs associated with it. The table above shows the difference between the original cost proposals and the sample worksheets that were provided during the interviews. Based on the proposal evaluations and interviews, as well as the cost proposals, Willdan Engineering was determined to be the highest rated proposer. The next slides will go into further detail about the high level of service that will be performed by Willdan. Following interviews, staff entered into negotiations with Willdan, and a more accurate cost proposal was received based on the city's specific needs. For information about Willdan themselves, I'll go through a few slides. Willdan has over 40 years' experience as a full-service building and safety and fire prevention consultant to public agencies. Willdan also provides services across multiple disciplines, as you see listed on the slide above. In terms of the proposed contract services provided, as it relates to staffing, there are key changes with staffing that differ from our current service provider. The first, there is one more part-time plan checker. The building official will be full-time instead of part-time. And inspection services will be provided by the full-time inspector, one full-time inspector, and the building official. With the building official providing inspections, it provides for an additional level of professionalism in the field and maintains connection between the plan reviewer and the end customer throughout the project delivery. In comparison, currently, there are two full-time inspectors providing inspections. As it relates to electronic plan checking, currently, all plan checks are submitted via hard copy. Three sets of plans per submittal are required. Willdan will provide electronic plan checking at no additional cost to the city. The applicant, as well as the city and contract staff, will have 24 access to check status of applications. This will help streamline the plan checking process and also help the customers save imprinting cost. One thing that should be noted, many companies that provided proposal provide for some level of electronic plan checking. However, in terms of what staff believes, staff believes that Willdan's online portal and its experience in providing plan checking, especially for the last 20 years, have fared better than, or fared better than the others. This screen above, it's a little hard to see, but these are screenshots that are taken from the online plan checking portal. The image that's to the left top of the screen, that shows how many applications are in. The top right portion, again, I apologize, a little hard to see. That is, if somebody wants to check the status of a plan review, they log in and they are provided with the status of the plan review. And then the bottom right-hand portion of the screen, it shows what the electronic plan checking looks like. So in addition to a list of typed-up corrections, the plans are also marked up with red lines. In terms of the plan checking turnaround times, the current plan check turnaround time is 10 business days for residential projects and 14 business days for commercial and industrial projects. Willdan has committed to meeting expected turnaround times and to expedite subsequent reviews, which will be five business days for residential project and seven business days for commercial and industrial projects. So as you can see, with the electronic plan checking and the expedited turnaround times, it will provide more efficiency in our building plan check process. Willdan also has, as mentioned earlier, expertise in multiple disciplines beyond building and safety. For example, they have expertise in planning, environmental, and engineering. As services in the city change periodically, it is beneficial to contract with a company that provides services across multiple disciplines. The process of hiring contract staff for specialized services for a specific project will be expedited if needed in the future. Again, multiple companies can provide these type of services. But staff through the interview process believes Willdan has the depth of services and expertise within each of these services because they have been providing them for several years. For example, if you can see the icon in the top right-hand corner, they have been providing engineering experience for the last 60 years. In terms of the cost proposal, the base cost for contract services is roughly $1,252,200. And this is specifically for staffing purposes. The city would be charged hourly rates as opposed to a flat fee, and no revenue sharing is proposed. No percentage of plan check fee is proposed as well. Fire services will be provided on an as-needed basis and is estimated at $39,000. The approximate total for year one is approximately $1.3 million. It should be noted that Willdan's original cost was a not-to-exceed amount of $2.1 million. During the interview and the sample worksheet that was provided, it went down to $1.6 million. And then after interviews, after they were determined to be the highest raider, Willdan refined its cost even further, and thus we are at about a $1.3 million contract for year one. The length of the contract is three years, and at a total not-to-exceed cost of $4.3 million, excuse me, $4.5 million. At the end of three years, if the city is satisfied with the level of service that's being provided, the city can amend the agreement to extend the term. If the city is not satisfied with the level of service provided, then it is possible to release an RFP again to provide a, to find a service provider that will meet the city's expectations. Since services fluctuate from time to time, and there may be a future need for additional services, a contingency is included in that $4.5 not-to-exceed cost. A budget amendment would be needed for fiscal year 2425. The costs associated for fiscal years 2526 and 2627 will be incorporated in the next two-year budget cycle. The costs associated for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven will be incorporated in the next two-year budget cycle. The recommendation this evening is to award an agreement to Willdan Engineering and authorize the city manager to execute agreement file number one sixty-three point one five in a form approved by the city attorney and to authorize a budget amendment for fiscal years twenty-four dash twenty-five. Alternatively, the council can discuss and take any other action related to this item. That concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have representatives from Willdan available in the audience to also answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the great report. Questions? Ms. Morris, any questions of the report given?
Can you come back to me, please?
Sure. Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, I do. What's the term for, oh, self-certification? Will there be self-certification? Are we allowing that with this Willdan contract?
Yes, we are still allowing for self-certification.
And the, what did you call it, the worksheet or the sample worksheet? Was, I assume they were all the same when we gave... When it went out for the RFP, did the worksheet go with it, or we called them back in and said, we've sent out the worksheet after we got all the numbers in?
The worksheet came after the fact.
Okay, that's the way I took it from you, is after the fact, because they were all over the place and it's kind of the... Because everybody sells something at a different rate to get to the same finish line.
Exactly. There is, amongst all the proposals, there is different numbers of staffing, there is vastly different cost proposals. So during the interview process, we actually asked each company to fill in a sample worksheet.
Gotcha, okay. And on Willdan's agreement, those, some of those numbers, did that come right off of a worksheet on some of those? Or that was just the estimated cost from their contract?
In terms of the cost proposal that came with the revised, that actually came in the revised cost proposal.
That was the revised cost proposal when it got lowered?
Yes.
It got lowered two times, or?
Officially, one time from the original proposal to this one.
From two points to one or something, the one point six now it's down to one point two or one point four?
Originally, two point one to one point three million.
And right now it's a one point three?
One point three for year one.
So, Mr. Dutton, for clarity's sake, what we did is released the RFP out to all the firms, got them all back. Normally, we would do interviews with the top-rated firms. In this case, they were so vastly different that we said, hey, these are different structures, different hourly rates, different proposals entirely. Let's see if we can get a little bit of an apples-to-apples comparison. So we had them fill out the worksheet to say, in this scenario, what would this?
So was the worksheet some kind of from one building or something, from if this?
Kind of a hypothetical.
Hypothetical plans or something? Okay.
And then...
With one scenario on it or multiple scenarios?
The same scenario.
Once we were able to sort of have that apples-to-apples comparison, we could then...
That's a good idea, because all of them charged you.
We could look at more realistic circumstances then and then get a realistic cost proposal. That's how it came through.
That's it for now. I'm sure I'm gonna have one or two more questions. All right.
Sunny Sanzinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Elizabeth, thank you so much for your work on this and your team. I can just appreciate all the time that you spend on this or invested on this. By way of background, I just want to go back to where you mentioned about complaints. There were so many complaints that were received. I want to share with you my personal experience with a complaint. It's kind of a news alert for a city council member to receive a complaint regarding a permit application. But the scenario, the actual case was a resident complained to me they're having adding a bathroom in their first floor because the dad cannot walk up the stairs anymore. And so the complaint was, they submitted the plan, they got the corrections, and then the architect made the corrections. We submitted, and the plan checker sent out another correction, which was more than the first list of correction. And so I was really adamant, I need to find out exactly what went wrong here. It doesn't make sense to me. Why would a corrected application have more corrections than the first submission? And lo and behold, what actually happened was, the first correction, there were supposed to be seven pages, but only five pages were sent out. So we traced the email, so only actually five pages of corrections were sent out to the applicant. And the actual correction was seven. So when they submitted the correction on five, they submitted again, they sent back the seven-page correction, which required more corrections than the first one. So anyways, I was not happy with that, and I'm glad that staff decided to come up with an issue on RFP, because we were not happy with the particular situation. So I just want to kind of share that experience with you because I experienced it firsthand. Question on this, just to piggyback on the worksheets. So you're comparing apples to apples. So based on that, you extrapolated the numbers. So you came up with the one million and some change. Is how it worked?
Yeah, essentially, the sample worksheet was really only meant for comparative purposes. And what we did is did a hypothetical. Okay, the city wants one full-time building official, one part-time plan checker, one full-time plan checker. These are the hours for each that we would like. The proposer would then enter in their hourly rate and determine that cost in terms of staffing. There were also add-on costs that I had mentioned previously because some companies were proposing to charge a percentage of the plan check fees. So we needed to get a better understanding of what that cost is going to be. So we did a sample scenario where if we were to collect, you know, fifteen thousand in plan check fees on a weekly basis, what would that number be? And so that plus the staffing cost determined those numbers in the sample worksheet. And again, it was only meant for comparative purposes.
All right, good, good. Can you show the chart in terms of comparing the cost among the proposers? Somebody kind of caught my attention. There you go. Okay. I noticed that, except for one, there's a, my vision is not that clear. There's on the second line of its proposal, there's a percentage plus a certain percent of permit fees. Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Except for one. So if we share a percent of the permit fees, how will that work?
So essentially, based on the amount of plan checks that come in, the percentage range changed from forty, or ranged from forty-two percent to seventy-five percent. So if we took in fifteen thousand dollars in plan check fees a week, then, for example, CSG Consultants, sixty-five percent of that fifteen thousand would be charged to the city in addition to the hourly cost for the staff.
So it's almost like an infinite number because the permit fees is basically, we try to, by law, right, correct if I'm wrong, city attorney, by law, the permit fee is supposed to recover the cost. So if there's a percentage, it's almost like an infinite equation?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have frequently raised a flag with regard to percentages on square footage and what have you, absent a fee study justifying that particular methodology of compensation, which the city bellflower does not have. To your point, it's unclear whether or not the percentage methodology actually covers the cost, which is the only thing that we can actually recover for as part of a permit fee. One way you could do it is through, just to pass through actual cost, rather than charge, say, I'm just pulling numbers out of the air, rather than charge a permit fee of a thousand dollars, instead, you would pass through the actual hourly cost for each review of a particular set of plans, which means that that would fluctuate. That's obviously a policy call, but remember that when one establishes the permit fees, the city council has to make certain findings that indeed these are, this is a cost reimbursable fee, not that the city is getting extra money as a part of the fee process.
Yeah, because we're not supposed to make money out of it.
Correct.
Okay. So it's going to be very, very challenging in terms of, if we were to implement that process, it's going to be very challenging.
We would need a fee study to justify the cost for a percentage of the permit fee process.
Okay. All right, good. So I'm glad we're not adopting that concept. Okay, one other thing also is, one of the things that you mentioned, Ms. Over, is that there's going to be a full-time building official in the proposal from Willdan?
That's correct.
Describe to me, what's, what do you see as the big advantage of having a full-time building official versus a part-time?
The main advantage is that they're here on a daily basis and that if anything were to occur, we have a body here that's present to answer any questions. So oftentimes, you know, there's scenarios that come up on a day-to-day basis where we need to ping the building official, whether it's related to a code enforcement case or something related to planning. The benefits of having a full-time building official in-house is so that they're here to, number one, manage the contract staff that's here to efficiently provide the services and then to also assist in the city for needs that we have as well.
So it will be a big help?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good. And also, thank you for moving into this automated plan check application. I think it's about time that we're doing it. Thank you so much for that. And going back to my experience with the plan check here, what do you see as the warning signs if we were to have another contractor again do the same thing? What are early warning signs that you can tell us so that these things will not happen to the extent that it was really problematic?
The signs that you can look out for is kind of the complaints where, you know, we've gone through four or five plan check reviews. That's a red flag. You should really only be going to two, three at the maximum plan reviews. Other complaints are more corrections than previous or different corrections than the first time. That's also an indicator for a red flag.
True, okay.
Those are kind of the main two things. You know, periodically, we do get complaints, but sometimes they're not justified. But, you know, when you have repeated complaints of the same thing, that's what you definitely want to look out for in terms of red flags.
Is your department equipped to monitor that performance of our contractor?
Yes, absolutely. And I will say, you know, most of the time when somebody provides a complaint, it's either directly to myself or to the building official. Previously, the council would quite rarely get a complaint. So if you are receiving more complaints than myself or the building official, then there's an issue.
Okay, all right, good. All right, I know I'll have more questions. Mr. Mayor, that's it for now?
All right.
Okay?
Mr. Sanchez, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, thanks for leaving some questions for us. Actually, I'll piggyback off of some of your questions and comments. Regardless of whether, what direction it happens goes to this evening on this item, I think that anytime we were changing anything major within our infrastructure of how we operate is an opportunity for us to grow and improve. So one of my first questions, definitely along the lines of Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, is what performance metrics will be used to measure the success and deliverables of whoever is in the building and safety department?
The online plan checking tool that Willdan provides is going to be a big help into determining those metrics because you can easily figure out what the status of the plan reviews are by logging in. So not only will the applicant have access to figure out what the status of the review is, the city will also have access. So we will be monitoring that to make sure that those reviews are done in a timely fashion and as expected under the contract. Other things that we could incorporate are, you know, regular meetings with the building official and Willdan staff to make sure that, you know, throughout the transition and throughout the life of the contract, that we're still meeting expectations that the city has in place for them, which is, quite frankly, going to be a high level of customer service that's being provided.
Okay, and regarding the, so another, will it be like a live platform for you? Will it report to you where every, all the stages of an application and the summary of that, or how does that look like?
I'll have to get with Willdan to figure out the details of the online portals.
For Willdan then?
Yes, but I'm sure there's a way to figure that out.
Okay. I'll save that question then for a little bit more detail. Was every applicant able to provide a level of online permitting, plan checking, I mean?
Yes, almost, actually, all of them were able to provide for online plan checking at some level. You know, we did get some proposals of just having an FTP site to download a PDF too, whereas we got some proposals that is more interactive in terms of the plan checking, where comments can be placed on the electronic plan set itself. So yes, there is varying levels of electronic plan checking across all proposers.
Okay. In the case of a transition, how will the transition from the current service provider to Willdan be managed to avoid disruptions in the ongoing projects?
Yes, and that will be a challenging thing for staff to administer as well. The transition could be as quick as ten days. That's on the quick end. And it could also be where there's no overlap, where our current service provider leaves and Willdan comes in. They have, when I say they, I'm sorry, Willdan has expertise in transitioning because they've done it with several cities. And so the expectation from them to transition smoothly is of importance to us and has been expressed to them as well.
Regarding the staff accountability side and the responsiveness, if Willdan were to be selected, what are the measures in place from Willdan's standpoint, if you know already, or this may be a question for them, in regards to customer service, in communication, not only at the front desk, but with regards to complaints, with regards to flexibility? Look, let's not, I don't want to be, you know, foolish and say that every, regardless of who's in that position, they're going to get complaints. There's always going to be someone unhappy. That's always going to be the case, regardless of who the operator is. The question is, how do we manage that? How are we customer-friendly? I can attest to maybe two years back, two or so, definitely there being a lot more issues, and at least maybe in the last three to six months, there's been a definitely change and improvement in our current state of the our current provider. But that took a lot of work. So again, taking the moment, regardless of who the operator may be, what will be in place from your department to ensure that there's effective customer service and access? And who will manage that, again, accountability perspective?
In terms of who will manage the accountability, I'll have, I'll ask if Willdan can answer that question. But in terms of the city's process, because I manage both building and planning, there will be regular meetings between myself and the building official. And if not the building official, somebody from Willdan that can help with this accountability and responsiveness. Because that's the whole point of why, you know, we're seeking a different service provider is that we do want to have a high-level customer service and also some to be able to provide a more effective and efficient building and safety operations. So that's really the crux of it. And that would be the expectation of Willdan.
In one of your slides, you talked about flexibility and changes throughout the year with regards to staffing needs or even expertise. Right now, we currently have, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we currently have a half-time building and safety official?
The current contract calls for a part-time.
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 Okay. If, and in the worksheet, in the worksheet, it's requesting a full-time regardless of who the operator may be, correct?
The sample worksheet only called out for a part-time building official. We're getting a full-time building official.
So Willdan is recommending a full-time?
Correct. That's how they intend to serve our needs.
Okay, so the worksheet requires a half-time, but they're recommending a full-time. Does that, in your opinion, improve? Or what does that do for us with regards to partnerships or other activities that happen that aren't in the day-to-day operations? What I mean by that, they're not plan reviews, they're not building inspections of new construction, but maybe code enforcement violations? What does that do for us by having a full-time?
Well, that helps us substantially because, you know, with the current cases with code enforcement, they do require a lot of building support, especially directly from the building official as it relates to red tagging buildings and making sure structures are safe. So in more recent years, there's definitely been a lot more need to have the building official assist code enforcement in the capacity of, you know, deeming structures safe or not. So the benefit of having a full-time person is that not only will they be here, they're, they are available to assist. So I would say the key differences between the current levels of staffing and the proposed, again, we'll have a full-time building official who will be taking care of all the day-to-day management of the building staff as well as inspections on an as-needed basis and as well as those other items that come up. We also have one and a half plan checkers that would be responsible for all the plan check needs and then two permit technicians that will be responsible for assisting customers at the front counter.
Okay, I think my last one for now. I know I joked about Sunny Santinaz, but now I have a bunch of questions too. With, you know, when emergencies occur, whether it's a fire-related incident or anything of that nature, we currently have, we have a response from our building official. Correct. That has to come out to these sites.
Yes.
My guess, but I don't wanna assume, is that this is also built into the contract? Regar, it was part of your, okay, of your worksheet? Okay, alright, that's good for me for now, Mr. Mayor. I'll have more questions at a later point.
Alright. Ms. Morris, have you developed some questions?
Yeah, well, I had them. I just was trying to work, no, you're good. My short time I've been on council, two of the complaints I have received have been regarding planning, pulling permits, just different levels in that area. One of my questions is, one of the complaints was about turnaround times. It was, can you go back to that slide? There was a slide that had the different, what Willdan's proposing, current?
There it is. Looking behind you, maybe that's easier.
It's easier for me to see this one, just in case anybody wondered why I always look this way. This is like right on top of me and it's kind of like, just like, whoa.
Must be younger than us.
That one looks good to me.
Okay, that's what I was looking, I thought I saw five business days and I just wanted to make sure that's what I saw and seven for commercial. And then also, I like the idea of the three-year contract where it's not something that we're locked into for years and then find out that we're not happy, or actually, we're not happy, but our residents aren't happy. And then, of course, electronic plan check, that is another one that's been very notable on a lot of levels that we're behind, behind the times when it comes to electronic, anything, lots of things. Those were my, my main points, I guess, not so much questions.
Councilmember Morris, it's also worth pointing out, Bellflower is somewhat unique, in fact, very unique among public agencies in the self-certification program that Councilmember Dutton had mentioned. And that if someone wants to bypass those turnaround times altogether, they can, they can have their licensed professionals stamp those plans that they certify with all of our codes and we'll issue the permits and start building their projects. Very few do that because they're, they're responsible on the backend when the inspections happen and it's not to code. But it is there if people want it, and there are firms that will take advantage of that. And it is a significant benefit to them because time is money.
Those are my, those are my things.
Alright, Mr. Dutton?
Thanks for circling back.
The fire inspection side, the thing that we added a few years ago, to me, that's important. It, I just see the efficiency of trying to get a project going. And it was total estimate, which was surprising, I think it was $39,000. It doesn't seem like that much.
Essentially, what, how I came up with that number is that, because Willdan's providing fire services on an as-needed basis on an hourly rate.
Right.
So to determine that number, I took the amount of hours that our current service provider has been providing those services and multiplied it by Willdan's hourly rate.
Right, got it.
And that's how that 39,000.
It's also worth noting, Mr. Dutton, in that instance, we provide them the choice. They can go through the fire department or through us.
Yeah. Pick us two times over the fire department, probably. One thing that, in the proposals, going through this over the weekend, is being an employer with employees, I noticed our safe bill's been calling, only working each personnel for the job 36 hours a week. And they call, call that full-time 36 hours a week. And I, and Willdan's proposal is 40, which I'm pretty much accustomed to all my life.
60.
Well, yeah, well, I am half-days. I work only half-days, but.
Yeah, 12 hours.
Is that something we always done? I mean, I just knew we had, I would ask how many people we had in there, you know, going through complaints and, you know, and you always got a neighbor, "I can't get my inspection," or something. And so you have to go through the back channels to try to see what's going on. And I always wondered how many people we had. I knew that, but I never knew the staff or the contract, it was only 36 hours a week.
That's the way.
The case forever?
Well, that's the way it was written in the amendment back in 2016. So that's based off of an amendment to the original agreement that occurred in 2016. So the 36 hours were taken directly from the proposal at that time.
Something, I would always had, I would have brought it up if I knew, but I just never knew. Shame on me, but it is what it is. And I'm glad to see going to 40 hours and then I see the caveat in there, "How are they gonna do that? We're a 980." And then I see how it was written is, is, it can be nine, it'll work out the same as 980. You know, they just work hours to get their 40, average the 80 hours in two weeks. And then the electronic permitting, thank you, Jesus, it's coming to Bellflower. I, you know, I talk to people, I know some construction people, and Bellflower was always behind not doing the electronic plan checks and whatever. And I've done electronic plan checks in other cities and it's great. It's so easy. The architect loves it, everybody loves it. Is it something that, and I see you were, one of the questions, I think Sunny brought out, or no, Victor maybe, that the electronic plan check, that all, everybody bid on it with electronic plan check, is that correct? So safe bills always had, and we just didn't opt to it, opt to bring it?
That's correct. We actually weren't familiar that they had that up, that capability until fairly recently.
So we never knew it existed?
Correct.
Wow.
And in Furnace too.
But we didn't ask either, yeah.
We've also been looking for our own electronic plan checking as well. Including online permitting.
Gotcha.
That goes across the board. I mean, one thing you guys have pretty clearly charged me with is modernizing a lot of stuff around this agency. And so this conversation's happening with regard to building and safety services. But for instance, Beth's team is also looking at plan checking for our planning reviews as well. So this is coming across the board in a lot of ways.
Yeah, that's the way of the times, but, yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to say we have a few more hours of coverage in the full-time building official onsite, full-time. I think this contract has staffed up pretty well and that's all I'm gonna say for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Santinaz, did you develop any more questions?
Yes.
Okay, just to piggyback on the electronic plan check, it is, it's very exciting as far as I'm concerned. So you mentioned that you're also looking into our own system? So once we implement this electronic plan check, is it gonna be owned by the city or owned by the contractor?
I'll need to get more details from Willdan, but Willdan currently owns their own plan checking software. So we would, in the interim, be using their plan checking software. When the city is ready to get their own online permitting, we'll also be getting online plan checking so that it's a city-owned permitting software.
Okay.
And we've already explored several companies. And we do have three companies that we have proposals from.
Are they kind of, in terms of functionalities, are they very similar?
Very much the same.
Okay, so in terms of the learning curve, from switching from one software to another, it will not be that much?
Hopefully not.
Okay.
But in terms, we did demos with all three companies and the online permitting, there's really a handful of companies that provide that and they all have very similar functions.
Okay, okay. So regardless of what your contracts is gonna be, when do you expect this electronic plan check to be implemented?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible, okay, very good. And then one more thing, you also mentioned about the multidiscipline staffing that Willdan provides? Can you give us examples of what those expertise might be needed?
Sure, and then maybe, so the main example, and you can see in that icon there, is engineering experience. There may be a time where Public Works and Len need somebody to help out with design. Those services could be supplemented by Willdan if needed. For my own division, in terms of environmental reviews, if at any point I needed help related to CQ documents, they have a team of environmental consultants that can help provide that service.
Okay, okay. What if a scenario, let's say one of your staff wins the Lotto and so you have an open position for a planner? Can, can Willdan provide staffing for that position on a temporary basis?
Yes, we would have to expand the contract
Okay.
to include for those planning services, but that can be easily done with an amendment.
Okay, but they have the expertise to provide that?
Correct.
Okay, alright, that's all I have for.
Alright, Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the electronic plan checking, if you were to do the permit online process as well, is it, would it behoove us to just wait until you have your system to do both? And it's city-owned, instead of having, if, regardless of whatever direction we go here, if we were to, why would we want the vendor to provide their own system in the meantime?
I would suggest, well, the way I would recommend this going forward is that they provide their own electronic plan checking software because we can start that right away, because they already own the software. That definitely helps the customer in terms of saving time and cost. They don't need to drive here from wherever they live to submit the plans and they don't have to submit the hard copies in order to submit. There is some urgency with our online permitting because in discussions with our IT manager, our Windows system in approximately a year isn't gonna be compatible with the desktop version of our permitting software. So there is already a need to try to find that online permitting service. And so the goal is to, because there is also an implementation that needs to be done with the online plan check, or sorry, with online permitting. So if we have the online plan checking done in place, we can focus on getting the online permitting so that by next year, you know, our system's not gonna default because it's not compatible. Then at least we're whole in those two regards, plan checking and permitting. And then when we get, we can also get our own plan check software so that we have the entirety of it.
Including, so we'll, just to be clear, we're gonna have one system? One's gonna be built into ours?
Correct.
Okay, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna go from zero systems to two independent systems? Okay, 'cause, okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, and this is all part of the modernization process.
No, which is I'm excited for and I'm glad I wasn't the first one to have to say that. Thank you.
Alright, any more questions on this side? Alright, so anybody would like to come forward and comment on this, now's the time? Yes?
For the record, we received a letter from Interwest Consulting Group. That was distributed at the dais prior to the start of the meeting.
Yes, we received that and every member has it in their possession.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, come forward, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name's Paul Moschino. I'm the President of Interwest Consulting Group. And I come here tonight to address inaccurate, misleading and unfair statements contained in the staff report 13A relative to the procurement for Building Department Services. Our fee of $864,000 is a fixed fee. It's the fee that we have for our staff to show up every day, 40 hours a week, full-time. It's not the $1,005,000 that was shown in the staff report. The worksheet that was completed has no bearing on the fees that we charge. In fact, for the last three years, Interwest charged the city of Bellflower $2.4 million for our services for full-service Building Department Services. I note that the budget for the Willdan contract for three years is $4.5 million, almost twice that of what Interwest is at. In fact, the staff, in terms of the recommendation, is looking for $410,000 this fiscal year to ask on top of the budget that you have. The Interwest proposal for $864,000 falls within your existing budget. There's no need to secure additional money to fund the Building Department for fiscal year '24, '25. It's noted that our fixed fee amount is the same vehicle and model we've been working with for the last 18 years. It's no different. We charge you the same amount of money every month for our services. That 46% that we were talking about in terms of plan check would be on top only if it's a large development, like a commercial property, industrial property, multifamily, where existing staff members couldn't handle structural capabilities ingress and egress with, with some of our CAFs certifications, things that are very specific to very large, very difficult plan checks, of which there are very few. I'll also note that fire protection in terms of inspections and plan review are included in our $864,000. There's no extra fees. We're not charging hourly rates for bodies. I will note that Interwest has a full complement of services beyond the Building Department Services. We're engineers, we're public works officials, we're planning, we're transportation engineers, we're zoning, we're right-of-way advocates. We do all services within the public domain of city government. We work for 99% of our communities, our public agencies, like yourself. As for this whole mystery of electronic plan check, I don't make light of it. We've been doing it for over 30 years on hundreds of thousands of communities across the United States. It's not novel to any particular company. We have our own proprietary software as well. Staff is well aware of it. We've discussed it with them before. They've never asked us to bring it forward. I will note that it's not like turning on a switch when you go to electronic plan check. The whole other side, the engineers, the developers, people submitting plans now have to go to electronic plans and figure out a whole nother format to do that. So it's not a switch that happens overnight. I note that within the Willdan proposal, they were charging 15 cents for each paper copy that they received in their plan checks. Interwest, that's twice the industry standard, by the way, and we don't charge anything for mailing, for paper versus electronic. When electronic comes, we flip over, we get it. When electronic comes, we flip over, we get it, we get it done. Again, no fee to the city for those issues. Relative to some complaints that occurred back in January, we found, it was actually March, seventy plan checks that showed up on our desk that were never logged within our system or the city's system. Thirty-eight of those were late, right? We take, we took those plan checks, we fixed them, within ten days we got all of those cleared and our building official resigned the day after, okay? That building official now works for Willdan, just as a point of reference, okay? Since then, we've instituted, Bill Hayes here, you probably know, who's our full-time building official. He works forty squares here, like all the rest of our team. Our proposal includes forty hours, full-time building official. Again, it's about fifty percent of the fee for Willdan. In conclusion, look, the numbers have moved around a little bit, but at the end of the day, we're still about half of what Willdan would be. Our, you can save almost two and a half million dollars in the next three years if you go, if you remain with the InterWest team. You could fund all of the wonderful programs within the community that we heard about last week, the flags, the home shelter, the community events. Why would some community go with our operator they don't know, spend another four, you know, two and a half million dollars and risk operational and public criticism for doing something like that? So, look, I'm available as long as you guys wanna talk about anything in our proposal or what we do or we don't do. I know it's not for me to speak, this is your community, this is your city council meeting, but I'm here to answer questions if you'd like.
Do you know why we went out to an RFP back in March?
Um, look, there's a lot of sides to every story. My mother said you-
What's your side?
Look, there's a lot of politics going on.
Poor service.
I'll be brief.
Poor service.
Okay, and we've met with the city, and I agree with you, we fixed it.
Are you proud of your company when they give us poor service?
Um, no.
No.
No, no.
So, why didn't you work as hard when you had the contract as you are now trying to keep it?
I think we had blinders on. We trusted our building official. We trusted our building official. And once we found out that things weren't right, we fixed them. And frankly, we've met over twenty-five times since our meetings in January with your city manager, your community development director, and they've told us time and time again, you guys are great. You've done an amazing turnaround. We like what you do. And look, if you don't agree with me, please let me know, but we haven't heard any complaints since we made the change with Bill.
No, Bill has been great. That's a breath of fresh air. But your company has served to embarrass every one of us in one shape or form. I mean, you'll get emails while we're on conferences in Sacramento in January. Showed it to our new city manager, he couldn't believe it. He says, "It must be the guy that's supplying the plans. Must be the architect. It can't be." No, we didn't wanna believe it. And then, as mentioned, there was this particular, Mr. Sanchez brought forth the example, he dug into it. The others were dug into it, where he kept sending it back, six, seven, eight times, plans that can't be approved three, four, five months later. I mean, just unheard of things. And so when we were found out about that, the council says enough is enough. You messed up.
I apologize for that. You know, we're trying to look forward, we've made adjustments. I hope we can continue to do work with you folks. Again, we're half the price of the other guys. I mean, your residents, your residents have to go through-
Just a moment. I don't appreciate the fact that you go out and solicit builders to lean on me because you guys are not, no longer possibly get the contract. That doesn't go well with me either. So your people are out in the field telling people to call me, the mayor, and our council colleagues, "Hey, give SafeBuild another chance." I think that's totally inappropriate, but you guys are managing to do that. Did you know about that?
No.
It's embarrassing, isn't it? You guys are fighting for your life here on this thing, but you've messed up. We've lost trust in you. Now, it's true, we're gonna pay a little more for it. We get it, but we're gonna get something. But you've embarrassed us by our colleagues, by the citizens of this town and we're trying to run an efficient organization here, what they were proud of. And we're gonna modernize it and we're gonna make it the best it can be, and you let us down. That's the bottom line. And it's hard to get the genie back in the bottle after it's exploded and out. You messed up. And we put it out for bid and we're looking at Willdan as being their strongest replacement for you. And you've given some reasons why, I don't know if the mail or whatever, you didn't get seventy different plans submitted, but nevertheless, we are the ending, like Harry Truman says, "The buck stops here." And we've had a lot of bucks stop on us because of your inefficiencies as our planning provider. And I'm sick of you guys. Now, you've tried to fix it in the last six months and you've done a good job, but, you know, it's kinda like when you find your neighbor in bed with the neighbor, your wife in bed with the neighbor, even though she's sorry, you never quite forgive it. And that's how I look at this thing. You guys have really messed up and you've tried to fix it, but I've lost confidence in you. Now, there may be some others up here, I'm speaking on behalf of the mayor. Everybody's got an equal vote here on how we go. But that's how I feel about it. And I'm sorry to scold you, but we have taken the brunt of your inefficiencies and it's tragic. I've never had, I've been on the council here almost sixteen years and I've never had this kind of operation affect our management in our city so badly as your company. And that's the truth. Anybody else wanna offer their, have I said enough?
I just say something.
Alright.
The wheels in motion start on this while we're here tonight, it started a long time ago when, you know, the testimony there from Councilman Sonny Sanchez was, that's just one letter. We've had two, three, four, five-page letters from residents and builders and commercial builders and at first, if I'm wrong, guys, let me know, but it can't be our team. Our team, we don't have no problems 'cause I've been here as long as Dan, we don't have problems. But this last six months or eight months have been tough. Complaint after complaint, and then you start wondering, we start asking questions and it finds out that, yeah, it's, you know, when you get a letter that so much can go wrong on plan check, it can't, that can't be true because there's so much wrong with it. And then you find out it is, and you, you know, and, you know, the building official that left here fixed a couple of things for me on some bad letters I had before she left. But the wheels in motion while we're here tonight started a long time ago. I don't know what to say other than, you know, I get it, you know, you try to get, you know, the best people. Bill, Bill has been great, all vows for him too. But he's staffed up and every business is shorthanded, I imagine you are too, as I'm an employer, we have trouble staffing, but it was really bad service. And I'm gonna stop here.
My only response is you see what you get. Look, we got a wonderful team in place now, you guys seem happy with them. Look, we've had some sins in the past, we fixed them. Still got a big dollar amount you're gonna have to think about. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to give testimony? Or are you afraid of me? Alright, any more discussion here?
No.
Oh. Okay. Good evening, Cheryl.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My comments are kind of anticlimactic at this point, but having worked for the assessor for thirty-four years as a real estate appraiser, I've kinda dealt with building and stuff, and also as a homeowner, my big question is, while looking at all of these, we talked a lot about plan checking, but was thought given to building inspections? The time, turnaround time to get somebody out there, you know, 'cause then sometimes there, I don't have that experience here in Bellflower, I will say that, but in another city I lived in, I did have trouble getting somebody out and I just wanna make sure that that's been addressed as well.
It will be.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to give testimony on this? Yes, sir. Your name, please.
Good evening to everyone. Aton Sheriff.
Okay.
I have a property in the city of Bellflower. I have a question regarding the fire day, it was about $39,000. That is inspection fee, I mean-
That's an annual fee that we would pay to have our-
Plan check.
Plan checked and the fire marshal that we would employ would approve the plan.
Beautiful, you know, and that is including also the low voltage fees, you know, that they have to handle both of them at the same time.
It's all fire-related, so if that's fire-related, it would-
Yeah, just wanna make sure that is included.
Ms. Obam, am I giving it right here?
The $39,000 is an estimate.
Right, but that's for fire marshal fees.
Fire marshal, plan check, and inspection fees related to fire services.
Now, he's asking about low voltage, is that included in that?
The low voltage, there is connection, you know, with the fire, you know, because, you know, monitoring system that they have to make sure that everything is working correctly, you know, with the fire, you know, with the sprinkler systems and notify and everything, you know.
Sprinklers, yes.
Yes, and the customer has the ability to go through LA County Fire or through the city's contract fire services?
Well, you're covered.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else have anything wanna offer, question? Alright, gentlemen, ladies.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to ask a question to Willdan.
Alright, is Willdan a representation here?
And while he comes up to the podium, I'd like to make a comment. I wanna acknowledge the SafeBuild's team, the changes with Bill. We all can acknowledge that, that the transformation has been great. I've seen a turnaround completely. And I'll leave that at there, but I do have a reason for saying that. So I do have a question for Willdan.
Identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City, members of the City Council. Patrick Johnson here with Willdan. I'm the Director of our Building and Safety Operations.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Patrick, good evening. I do have a question related to inspections. One of the things I've seen, and I'm not a huge fan of, is the long windows in general. That's not just in Bellflower, but throughout the region, where inspectors or where the Building and Safety Department basically gives the contractor, developer, a four-hour window where they have to wait onsite. Not a fan of that. Is there, whether it's in the morning or in the afternoon, right, that's the two windows that you usually get. How can Willdan improve that in Bellflower if we were to go with Willdan? What can we, how can, how can we be a better service provider? I know that's, before you answer, I know that's the standard practice, but I'm not a fan of standard.
No, absolutely, and that's actually a really good question and thank you for asking that question. Right now, from my understanding, is the inspections come in, you know, the night before or whatnot and essentially, that morning, the inspector was able to kinda get their inspections kind of put together. Some people, you know, request PM, some people, you know, request AM, and what happens is you end up with maybe this four-hour or three-hour window. There's apps out there that essentially can bring it down a little bit more and what I'd actually suggest from day one, let's just say you've got fifteen inspections, right? And you've got, you know, seven in the morning, eight in the afternoon. Well, you know which three are gonna be in the first part of that morning. You know which four are also gonna be in that later part of that morning. Instead of a nine to twelve, your AM window inspection, have it nine to eleven, so you got like a two-hour window inspection and then maybe ten to twelve. So there's a little bit more of a two-hour window inspection. And then also, the inspector should be giving the applicant a call before they leave the job site to kinda let them know, "Hey, look, I'm on my way," and give them a forewarning. To answer your question.
Absolutely. On that note, does that come with your system? Does that service come with your system or is that an added feature?
So, the electronic plan review is completely separate.
Okay.
But to answer your question, no, that does not come with the system. This is just, you know, and the one thing that we need to do is we need to get in here and start figuring out, "Okay, what's going on, what's working, what's not working? How do we fix things? How do we make things, you know, more, you know, improve them a little bit better?"
Would it be an added cost to have that level of service improvement? Just curious.
Yeah, no, definitely. We'll definitely take a look at that and something we'll definitely-
Councilmember Sanchez, I would add, again, we're looking at these things across the board.
Right, well, that's-
Things like sending Frank out to do public works inspections. These are things that we might provide inspection windows for things too. Certainly, as we're looking at those softwares, that's something we can absolutely be looking at. That's a priority.
What you're saying is that was more of a question for staff.
Well, both ways. I mean, if we have a contract service provider, we have expectations for them that would equal or better than ours. So if we're improving ours, I would expect that they're also improving theirs.
Alright, okay. Alright, and then, let me see, what other questions do we have here? Can you, Mr. Patrick, can you kinda walk us through how traditionally Willdan handles complaints or backlogs?
Absolutely, I mean, it happens, not gonna lie. You get a complaint, sometimes, you know, they're legitimate, sometimes they're not, you gotta kinda fill them out. First thing you wanna do is definitely hear out what the complaint actually is and listen to the applicant to see actually what's going on. Probably at this level right now, we'd probably bring it to the building official. Let's just say it's a plan review complaint, 'cause really, in this industry, you got inspections and you got plan reviews. So you got a plan review complaint. Well, let's have the building official take a look at the comments. Maybe half these comments aren't even, you know, legitimate for that actual plan itself. Let's see how we can work with that applicant. Let's start redlining some things on the plans or, you know, if they're electronic, let's start kinda giving them some directions as far as how to go about correcting them. If it's something in the field, the good thing is, is that the building official we're proposing is also gonna be acting as a senior inspector, doing some of the high-level inspections, so he can go out there and at least work with the public and work with the applicants as well too and handle those things as well. If anything needs to be escalated from the building official, it would go to the project manager.
Who is the project manager? Is it-
Pete Goodrich, who we have here tonight.
Okay, so let's say the building official is the problem. What does, what does staff have to do to work with, who does that, who does the staff go to?
Hopefully Elizabeth would reach out to Pete. And then Pete and I would, you know, convey with each other and figure out what we need to do.
As part of the services that Willdan would provide, does that include pre-meetings with potential applications or applicants?
Yeah, I mean, just like a lot of cities, you get a large development that comes in there. They have kind of a pre-development review committee. We'd be able to review those plans as well too.
Your building inspector, or your inspectors that go out on the field and inspect the mom, you know, the residential projects, do they go, what kind of a training do they go through on customer service?
All of our inspectors, before we bring them on board, we actually ride them along with several other inspectors so they get kind of a feeling as far as which all the inspectors work with. Customer service? Yeah, I'm not sure how to answer that one, I mean-
The reason I bring that up is, this was back in, you know, pre-January, you know, pre-March, back last year, those were some of the issues that we saw firsthand. I'll tell you firsthand experiences, where the inspector essentially belittled, belittles, right, the applicant or the owner-builder, right? How do, how will you ensure that that doesn't happen to our residents? And when I say belittle, I'm talking, you know, pretty much to the extremes of just insulting them straight out, flat out. How can you guarantee that Willdan will not do that?
First of all, that's unacceptable. You know, hopefully we would filter that out in the individual before we even hire the individual. How can we ensure that would not happen? You know, hopefully our building official would be having daily communication with inspectors, also be going out there with them and showing them how to do customer service, work with them. A lot of times when an inspector's out there and you have a contractor, instead of just writing up a correction, you know, you failed, right? The contractor wants to know, "Okay, what's wrong here?" And that comes with the customer service, and that's what we try and teach our employees. You know, "Look, you're missing an eight thirty-five here. Hey, look, you know, your edge nailing on the sheer walls are not correct here. Let's, you know, it's supposed to be four inches on edge and it's only six inches on edge. Let's get some additional nails in here." And also, you know, a lot of times, what we do is we actually come back to that inspection later on that day. If the contractor says, "Look, I can finish this up in a couple hours, I can be, you know, we'll come right back there." So, but right there, that's customer service, it's trying to work with someone.
Okay. For staff, for our staff, our city staff, how easy or flexible will it be to swap out, let's say you have an inspector that we don't believe- uh, easy or flexible will it be to swap out, let's say you have an inspector that we don't believe is meeting our standards? Is that going to be a difficult process, or what does that look like?
No, and that's what's nice about Will Dan, is we do have a lot of inspectors in the area, so it's pretty easy.
All right.
So it's not an issue.
And Councilmember Sanchez, if that's happening, that's certainly something I would encourage that applicant, that contractor, that resident to be reaching out to our staff directly, because we can be their advocate in that regard as well.
It got taken care of in March.
What's that?
It got taken care of in March, yeah. No, it, it got taken care of, as of now, we don't have that issue anymore, but.
We don't want that here, and the city doesn't want that here, and there's no place for that.
Understandable, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
Can I add just one more thing?
Yes.
Um, ultimately, this comes down to me. This city is very true to my heart. Uh, I've got four generations of family in the city, and it's family I've actually married into, so I can't really say it's actually my family, it's family I married into. After World War Two, my, uh, great-grandsons, he, um, moved up there on Murrock. Uh, we'll drove in Murrock up there, uh, Lyle Smith was his name, and then, uh, his, uh, two kids went to Bellflower there, Bellflower High. And then, their daughter, so like my, my, my wife's sister lives up off Hoplin, and then they have kids as well too, that play baseball here. So, this is very, very true to my heart, this city is. I will not disappoint you.
Well, we know you know where Murrock is and where Hoplin is.
I was raised on Hoplin.
But no, but, thank you so much, this is, um, a great pleasure.
And those three all went to Bellflower High, so you go.
I got one question.
Eh, 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 I think my father-in-law probably graduated, I'm guessing, sixty-eight or so.
I'm graduating sixty-nine, so you're talking to the choir here, you know.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Yeah, you heard earlier what, uh, Inner West was saying that, you know, they're half the price of Will Dan. What do you say to that?
You know, I, I don't know how their prices are broken down, but when you started comparing apples to apples, that was not the case. And I would just have to look and just see how their prices are actually broken down. I do know that they're taking a certain percentage of the permit fees, based off the spreadsheet that I see, so. Um, that's not the same thing as a certain percentage of the plan check fees, two different things. So, honestly, I would just have to kind of see how they're coming up with their numbers. At the end of the day, we're all pretty much kind of in the same line as where it comes to costs.
Yeah, we're all going to try to get to the same finish line and stay in business.
Um, may not have the same kind of, um, staffing that we're actually proposing, because with the new staffing that came out, you know, there's additional services that are also included in there.
More staffing.
So, I think maybe that's the difference. But I could not really answer for their numbers at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
All right, unless, no, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay, sure, sure. Thank you, ma- thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of questions, Patrick. One is, um, uh, I want to focus on customer service, and part of my question earlier was, um, about monitoring of the progress of the permitting process. So how would you assist our planning director? In terms of monitoring the progress of the permitting application? What kind of tools do you have?
Um, so essentially, with our electronic plan review process, those plans are actually logged in into the electronic plan review process. They're assigned to a plan reviewer, and that plan reviewer has deadlines, so those actually show up on their computer every day. So, we would keep track of actually the turnaround times on the plan reviews pretty, pretty well there.
Okay, so, so it seems like you're monitoring the progress, so if there's certain deadlines, and then that deadline is not met, then it will trigger some kind of a, a message, so to speak. Um, will you be sharing that information with the planning director if it's become rampant delays?
Absolutely, so with electronic plan review site, uh, Elizabeth here would be actually be able to get on there and see that on a daily basis as well too, and she could just look at just the Bellflower.
Before it becomes a big problem.
And, and also, I want to speak up about the electronic plan review, it is a way to archive the plans. So right now, you've got hard, hard plans, and what happens if you ever need to archive them, you already get them saved in the PDF. And even if the city goes to a different system, essentially, those PDFs can just be moved over to your system, or, you know, they can be archived and whatnot.
Okay.
Once they're approved, and once they're approved, they actually have a Will Dan stamp burned into the PDF as well too.
Okay, great segue, that was my next question. Do you have a lot of experience in terms of migrating from, let's say, you get, you own the, um, the plant, the, um, the system for plan check and plan application, all these things. And if the city decides to buy its own software, uh, will the migration very difficult, or have you, what's your experience in terms of migration?
So the migration from Will Dan's system to the city's system is going to be seamless, there's not going to be any difference at all. But what the migration problems are going to come into play is how the city's currently bringing plans in from their current permitting software system to the new permitting software system.
Ah, okay, the, the new ones, the new ones.
Yeah, which, which, which Will Dan doesn't have any control of that. As far as Will Dan's electronic plan review process, at the end of the day, it's just a way we're able to, you know, shuffle plans back and forth. But think about it, as a paper plan, they gotta be printed up, someone's gotta walk them into the city during city hours. The city gets them, and then all of a sudden, the plan reviewer gets them, whether it's off-site or onsite, it may take a day or two. Or electronic, this is back and forth in the same seamlessly, you know, at, you know, within an hour, you know, within minutes.
I see, okay, that's good.
So it really speeds up the process overall.
So migration will not be an issue in that case?
No, no, not at all.
And, and finally, um, you mentioned about Murrock and Hoplin, it's District One and Two. Do they have any relatives in District Three, Four, and Five? Thank you, thank you so much, Patrick.
I'm just here to help out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one to staff.
All right, you're.
I don't know who wants, wants this one, I'm gonna.
You can go.
Thank you.
The, I don't know, Beth, Travis, or Ryan wants to answer this, but same question is, uh, Inner West was mentioning that it was so much cheaper, even more than half cheaper, or, or twice as much cheaper, I think is what he said. But, uh, explain that to me again.
Sure, this is exactly why we went through the process, we did. We got proposals in, they varied as widely as they did, and we said, we need to be able to compare this on some, uh, justifiable, apples-to-apples basis. Hence the worksheet.
The sample worksheet.
Once we had that in place, we got a little closer, and then we could start to actually look at our operations and say, okay, what's the more realistic number based off of this? And that's how we got to the number we came to. Having said that, uh, as Carl mentioned, there's s- some question as to how, and I think Sonny, I think you were the one kind of hinting at it, as to how do we justify a fee based on a percentage being taken?
Totally get that.
Uh, we'd have to do some sort of fee study to justify that, and frankly, there was only one proposal that came down to straight hourly rates without any percentage being taken.
So, in the past with, uh, SafeBuild, did, were we doing a percentage at that time, to all those previous years?
Yes.
And we've been doing fee schedules? So, we, we found a magic mythology there to figure it out, yeah, but, yeah, by the seat of our pants, huh? You went around, so, yeah, it was.
Councilmember Dunton, if I can also add, um, a little bit to how the cost proposal from Inner West provided. There was slightly less staffing, so that accounted for the lower price. And then there was also a discount that was provided to the city because we've been a longtime client of theirs.
But that doesn't make up of the numbers in the, that Inner West was saying.
There's also.
Or Doc and Million.
There's also some argument here that, um, this has been a flat-rate contract since, as long as Mr. Patterson was around, it was a flat-rate proposed contract. Having said that, when development is going crazy, maybe the city's getting a fantastic deal. And when there's no development happening and the economy is slow, maybe we're overpaying. It's hard to calculate that out, unless we're looking at an hourly rate.
I get, I get that, I just wanted to shake this tree a little harder on that, but I, you know, I, the mythology is, is with the, the worksheet or whatever, now technically, we're only a hundred and forty thousand different. And the change. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ju- just for clar- clarification, um, is my calculation incorrect, uh, Will Dan, I just summed up all the hours here. Came up with two hundred and twenty hours a week.
Yeah, that's what I came up with.
Versus two hundred and six.
Plus the part-time.
No, hours, this, this is hours.
Yeah.
Versus two hundred and six, so, we're getting fourteen hours a week with Will Dan, fourteen hours more.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, it's actually two twenty plus twenty on the part-time, is what I, my calculus, it's two forty total. There's a twenty hour, if one of the lines is for, for a full-time tech and a, and a half and a part-time tech.
Right, that's, they have, uh, one, two, three, four, five full-time, that's two hundred hours.
Yeah, five full-times, yeah.
And then part-time, twenty hours.
No, six, six full-times. Two, three, four, five. You're right, five.
Five full-times, so two hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Versus two hundred and six.
Okay.
All the questions been answered?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have one more.
Okay.
This is for the city attorney. Mr. Berger, there was mention, um, about a longtime building official who was, uh, who now works for Will Dan. Under the seven hundred forms, or for that person under, actually, item fourteen D, that the building official falls under that qualification. Is there enough, in your opinion, enough, um, separation? I guess I'm assuming Will Dan's big enough, I'm trying to phrase my question here. Uh, they're big enough where there's enough separation, and there's no issues with us even engaging in a contract with Will Dan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, i- if you're talking about undue influence by former building officials, former employees, what have you, there's been no influence whatsoever from any individuals that may have had any affiliation with Bellflower. Staff has worked very hard to make sure that that didn't happen, and I know Will Dan has done the same, so that's not something that you need to be concerned about.
Very good, thank you. Ready for a motion, if we have questions answered?
Mayor, may I just, I'll just make one final comment before we take a motion. The cost has been mentioned as a factor, and the way I see things is just, um, I've hired many employees in my career. You have two applicants. One is an average applicant that asks for, let's say, eighty thousand dollars a year. And you have a superior applicant that's asking for ninety thousand dollars a year. Do you settle for eighty thousand because that applicant is? I'm just trying to draw an analogy here, if we decide to go for Will Dan, you're as, you're, you're very, basically shooting for quality. And just like what you mentioned, um, the bridge has been burned already, the train has left the track already, and on top of that, based on the staff's, um, evaluation, uh, Will Dan is far superior than the other applicants. So I'm just kind of laying it out in terms of my analogy. Yes, both, both, um, contractors can do the job, but do you see the other ja- the other contractor as more capable, more superior than the others? And is it worth paying that extra money for that hi- higher quality of service? Thank.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to final comment on this too as well, I do want to look at Bill, uh, our building official currently, and just say, I know he's done a good job of turning it around. And by no means is, uh, my decision today in whichever direction I go personal. I think that, uh, we've been in this situation, it's been a twenty-year contract. It, somewhere down the line, it, it did, you know, have its issues, it eroded. Um, building, safety, or Bill came in and fixed it, repaired it, so I think that's a testament to, to him and to, uh, the change that was tried to, that, that you tried to make, Paul. I commend you for coming in here and acknowledging the, where it fell short. Personally, I too have hired a lot of people and worked with a lot of people, and I think this is in the stage where I don't know that we can stick together. However, it's a three-year contract. Maybe we're wrong, who knows? But from my standpoint, it might be time to try something different. Check it out, you know, get a, I, we know, we all know people that have been divorced and remarried, and you just never know. So, I, I'll leave, I'll leave some level of hope there and some level of sense. Um, but I, I do just want to say that, uh, to Paul, as he's here, the president, you know, you've got some good staff and the people that you turned around with, and, uh, I wanted to acknowledge them for that, okay? But, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other comments before we go to a vote? Still looking for a motion here.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Board agreement to Will Dan Engineering to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement file number one-six-three-point-one-five in the form approved by the city attorney.
And number two. Number two, motion?
The motion by?
No, the, the authorize, the second part of the motion?
The second part of the motion.
Are we doing both?
Put them all together.
The budget amendment.
Yeah. And we do the budget amendment, uh, adopt resolution. Number two, authorizing a budget amendment to increase the appropriate, the appropriation for the account number six hundred dash four-two-zero-seven-two dash four-one-two-zero by four hundred and ten thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five with a general fund transfer.
The second to motion.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dunton, uh, supported by Councilmember Sonny Saninaz, please poll the council.
Councilmember Saninaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, thirteen B, Mr. Smoot.
Uh, Carl's team is going to take this one, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to introduce Deputy City Attorney Swann Fortenbach, who will give the presentation for this particular item.
I'm so sorry, my name is Ilani, um, we're from Calvary Chapel Christian School. We had a government assignment to come and visit a council meeting, and we chose this city. Um, and we have a curfew of nine-thirty.
You want a signature on something?
Yes, please.
You got twenty minutes, Dan.
Travis, can you help her out?
You want to take a short break?
All right, we're going to call a health break, and, uh, you can go home and study.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Slawn Fortenbach, and I am Deputy City Attorney. Tonight I'll be presenting on nine-one-zero-three, nine-one-two-one, Artesia Boulevard. As you are aware, the property has a long history of code enforcement efforts, starting back in two thousand nine. These first focused on unpermitted uses at the property, including vehicle storage and blighted conditions. These culminated into further enforcement efforts to clean up the property. Sometimes these enforcement efforts included, um, involvement of other agencies, including the DMV and the LA Sheriff's Department. Those investigations had to do with storage of stolen vehicles and also the use of the property for unpermitted purposes. Um, going back to January twelfth of two thousand twenty-three, the city council confirmed the loss of both legal non-conforming uses on the property for both auto sales and operating more than one auto repair business onsite. Continuing onward with code enforcement history, back in November of two thousand twenty-three, we sent the property owner a notice of public nuisance, listing many violations, including unpermitted storage of vehicles, unpermitted vehicle sales, storage of hazardous materials, allowing pollutants to run off into storm drains, and operating without necessary permits. Moving forward to January seventeenth of two thousand twenty-four, we conducted an inspection at the property where we saw significant progress towards compliance. Generally, most of the stored vehicles had been removed, and also some parts, junk, and debris had been removed as well. Having worked with the property owner for several years, we knew that progress would oftentimes be made, and then there would be a lag in other corrective actions being pursued. and then there would be a lag in other corrective actions being pursued. So the city attorney's office per- pursued an administrative hearing, which occurred on February eighth, two thousand twenty-four. At the administrative hearing, it led to an amended administrative abatement order, which was issued on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, giving the property owner ninety days to remove all unpermitted uses on the property, unpermitted structures generally, and blight from permitted structures. Furthermore, it ordered the elimination of polluting substances from possible runoff into storm drains, and the elimination of stained lot surfaces. As you'll see, due to decades of use of the property for auto sales and repair, the property is littered with stained surfaces, and these stains are the result of motor oil and industrial substance leaching. We'll be talking about different parts of the property today, those are divided in these areas one through six. Here we have area one, which is a century-old chicken coop. It was determined to be an unsafe structure due to the deterioration of the roof and walls. Next, we have area two, which was determined to be an unsafe structure due to the deterioration of the interior walls. We have area three, which was determined to be an unsafe structure due to the deterioration of the middle portion of the roof, which you can see in the bottom-left corner of this slide. These determinations come from the June two thousand twenty-four inspection of the property and the determinations ba- made by the building official. Here, the building official also found that there existed unpermitted exterior walls. In area six, we see a mobile trailer that was installed without the required city approvals, permits, and inspections. Furthermore, there is an enclosed addition to the unpermitted structure, which was created, again, without city approvals, permits, and inspections. Here are some additional images of the property, demonstrating blight and continued violations. Here's the lot surface, where it was mentioned that this is stained with motor oil and industrial substances, which have accumulated over decades. Again, referring back to the findings of the building inspector from his June two thousand twenty-four visit to the property, areas one, two, and three were determined to be unsafe structures, they had unsafe and unpermitted electrical systems, they were deemed not secure and unsanitary. Meanwhile, areas four and five had different considerations, area four had unpermitted gas, electric, and sewer. These were previously installed without permitting and were substantially capped without required city approvals. In area five, there was a bathroom addition to the north of the shed, which was demolished, and the utilities were capped, again, without required city approvals. And in area six, we have the mobile trailer that was installed without the necessary city approvals. Furthermore, the enclosed addition to the unpermitted structure, which has been erected. Looking forward, August second of two thousand twenty-four, we sent the property owner a final notice of compliance, providing him until October second, two thousand twenty-four, to meet the corrective action deadline. Among other things, we asked that they remove the remaining trailer, abate all lot surfaces visible from the public right-of-way, demolish or rehabilitate all three permanent structures, and eliminate the lot surfaces which were soaked in motor oil and industrial substances. The property owner responded on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four in a letter, um, in that letter, he denied the continued presence of public nuisances on the property. Recently, the property owner also submitted a planned proposal for implementing a solid white vinyl fence, which he can install by right. The city informed the property owner that if this resolution is adopted, it may result in a determination that the property owner landscape the setback as a vacant property, which may interfere with the planned fence. The property in its current form is an imminent threat to the community. The lot surface on the property is contaminated with decades' worth of oil and industrial substance buildup. Furthermore, the property is littered with remnants of unpermitted implementations and unpermitted removals of electrical, sewer, and gas systems. As already discussed, areas one and six are structures which likely need to be demolished. Structures in area one, the chicken coop, have no reasonable expectation to be rehabilitated for any use. Meanwhile, the trailer in area six is not only an eyesore, it is also unpermitted in its own right and contains unpermitted electrical work and other modifications making it unsafe. Areas two and three may have more potential for rehabilitation. However, if the property owner does not rehabilitate, the expectation is that we are going to demolish the structures. Furthermore, we would remove and destroy any item that is not supposed to be there. As stated on the slide, we are seeking an emergency abatement in which the city council authorize emergency abatement and also authorize direct contracting, and where the city is allowed to bypass formal bidding requirements mandated by the state. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can just tag-team on the presentation, the resolution as proposed does two things. One, it allows the city council, allows the city to directly contract with a contractor that can go in immediately, uh, well, after the expiration of October second, go in immediately and abate the nuisances. And secondly, it authorizes the city manager, myself, to exercise all legal means to try to recover the city's costs, and also to ensure that we are able to get onto the property with an abatement warrant issued by a court of competent jurisdiction. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Berger, so the, uh, property owner would have up until October second to carry out what we're suggesting we will do after October second?
Yes, as the property owner has been able to do for years.
All right, so, but he can still do it on his own without us interfering?
Up until October second, correct.
And then after that, um, we will go forward in a very quick manner to go forward with it? We're not gonna allow it to, uh, stay at, at this point, or what's our plan there?
Uh, aft- assuming that for the sake of this discussion, that the council were to adopt the resolution, Mr. Grecky would be able to locate a contractor that would be able to get onsite as soon as practicable, once we have an abatement warrant, which is a judge's order allowing us to go onsite and perform the demolition that the deputy city attorney mentioned, and to rehabilitate the property at a bare minimum in accordance with the vacant lot regulations, uh, other public nuisance requirements and what have you.
Okay.
So really, to answer your question, it's a practical issue of how quickly we can put a contractor under, under contract.
And how long does it take to get that abatement order from the judge?
That is issued very quickly, uh, it's done ex parte, meaning that there's no need for a notice to the property owner. We go in and obtain the abatement warrant since the, uh, abatement order was already issued, as was mentioned in May. We would use that as the basis for the abatement warrant and going on to the property.
Okay. Could you put up the slide that shows the complete, numbered the different sections of the property? Yeah, that's it. So what's this here behind area four, is that, these cars part of the property?
These cars are part of the property.
Are they still there? I mean, as of June the fourth, whatever this, they were there, are they still there now? All right, well, just a second, I think staff will know. So Brian, I'm pointed to this area of automobiles, is that still on the property?
Uh, no, to my understanding, all the vehicles which were on the property at one time have all been removed.
Okay, 'cause when I saw the picture, I was surprised to see them. All right. Mr. Sanz Inez, any questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, can you show the, the first slide, uh, showing the timeline? Okay, so this started way back in two thousand nine. So we're dealing with these issues for fifteen years, correct?
Yes, the, the first issues we focused on were the unpermitted uses.
Yeah, okay, so it's a long history. Now, the, the payment, the, uh, what do you call this, the, the abatement order was issued on May thirty-first, and it's good for ninety days, right? Would it expire in ninety days?
But, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the abatement order required compliance within ninety days.
Okay, ninety days.
The city attorney's office, in an effort to still gain voluntary compliance, gave an additional sixty days to the property owner to bring it to compliance.
That was the main question, because it, that would have expired in August thirty-first.
Yes, so there wasn't, it, it doesn't really expire, it, it expects compliance within thirty, ninety days. The city attorney's office determined that there had been some compliance by the property owner, and to encourage further voluntary compliance, since, as you know, the city tries very hard for the property owner to voluntarily comply with the municipal code, we gave them additional sixty days to comply. That sixty days expires October second.
So the city there does being nice.
Which I recognize what you're saying, yes.
Okay, yeah, because in, on August, August second, there was another notice of final inspection, so there was another step taken.
Yes.
So you've basically given, over all these years, you've given the, um, the respondent more time to comply.
The city has, has worked very hard to try to achieve voluntary compliance, yes.
Uh, a- and finally, um, in terms of the, the cost, it says here the engineering estimate is about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we'll basically bill the, the, the owner based on actual cost.
Correct, so if-
Whether it's city staff or contractor, we ain't gonna make any money out of it.
Correct, the city will, will lean the property, uh, in the absence. If the city has to go in and abate the nuisance, the city will lean the property in order to recover its costs.
Okay, since this is an estimate from the engineer, I'd like to propose to increase it so that you don't have to come back to me, to us later on, just in case additional costs, because we're gonna be billing actual costs anyway, so.
If, if the council would like to appropriate additional money, we're always happy to.
I would like to add fifty thousand dollars as a cushion, as a, just in case we need more money, or the staff need more money for it. So when it comes time to, um, make a motion, I'd like to add fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, noted.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Berger, just, uh, to piggyback off of, or a little bit more clarity, on the, um, abatement warrant after October second, do we initiate the process after Oc- October second, or are we doing it proactively and ready to go on October third?
We will have the paperwork ready to go for October third.
Okay. And I, I thank you, uh, council member Sunny Sanz Inez for clarifying, I, I, I mean, the background here is, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious that there's been a lot of communication over the course of fifteen years, um, to get something done here, uh, to get to compliance, voluntary compliance. So, so I don't have any further questions at this time, thank you.
You were in high school fifteen years ago, weren't you? Yeah, thank you. Ms. Morse, have you any questions?
No, my, my question's Sunny.
All right, Mr. Dunton.
It goes this, this far, and the track record sure indicates it may. And we do have a contractor abate the property. And then would it be ter- at that time, would it be determined a vacant lot? It's obviously a vacant lot now with some structures on it. So where I'm leading this is now is in violation of the vacant lot ordinance that we have on the books. That hasn't been talked about, because it could continue to be this way for some time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we briefly talked about it in the presentation, but definitely it is a vacant property at this point, that is subject to the vacant property regulations. So that is something that will be part of the consideration for abatement of, of the property. We will incorporate that into the abatement warrant.
So that'll be incorporated in it, so now I'm wondering how much? Yeah, do you see, do you see where I'm going with that, because we know, we all know what to-
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the estimated amount included the landscaping to comply with the vacant lot regulations. So that was part of the engineer's estimate.
Was part of, it was, and the cleanup.
Correct.
That's down, down to dirt, you think, or?
That is a factual question.
Yeah.
I went to law school and I, not public works school, so it's not, Mr. Grecky is shaking his head, no, so it's not down to the dirt.
If we're going to bait oil leaching into the concrete for whatever, that's what I was told, so it's what was said.
We will-
Should we, should we pad it more, is what I'm saying. That's what I would think to do, like, I think we ought to just double to two, but four. Because what, if we're starting, if we, if we go down this road, like you said, Sunny, you know, Sunny, we don't wanna come back and-
Yeah, there's, there's no harm anyway, because we're gonna be billing them based on actual cost.
Exactly. Okay.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
So if we abated and then prepared as a vacant lot ordinance, we would have to saw cut out portions of the lot unless it had all been removed to accommodate the flora and the fauna, correct? I mean-
Landscape man.
Landscaping would re- 'cause it looks to me like it's a concrete desert now.
To, to the back sidewalk, we would probably have to, honorable mayor, council members, we probably have to create, uh, a, a small buffer where, where we can do that. I, I do not recommend removing all that concrete.
Would it suffice if he would have put a slurry seal over the entire lot?
That's, that's the right move.
Okay.
It'll make it look brand new.
Any other questions before?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question for Mr. Berger. Uh, for the emergency, um, ordinance, or for the emergency, um, does that require a four-fifths authorization?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have of the property, since we're kicking figures around as to how much we would lean the property, do we know that there's an equity equal or greater than that amount that we will be able to tap on?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can't answer that question standing here, I don't know the answer to that.
Wouldn't that be, he may owe more on the property than our, than we would be looking to recover?
It, maybe, uh, I will say this, that the liens related to public nuisances will take our superior to other types of mortgages. So that, we will take precedence, it acts as if it's a tax lien on the property.
All right, so if he had other encumbrance on the property, we'd take priority?
Correct.
Okay. That's it, no questions? All right, uh, is the applicant here? All right, please come forward. Property owner, I, so what's your role in this?
Uh, so my name's Simon Sharaf.
Did you sign in the register there?
Yeah.
Good.
I'm about to. And I'm here on behalf of Artesia Enterprises LLC with Aetan.
All right, so are you his attorney, his real estate agent, or his son, or what do you do?
His son.
All right.
But, the only, the only one I can't claim is a lawyer.
All right, so we're talking about your inheritance here.
Uh, well, actually, we're talking about my new project.
All right.
But, yeah, uh.
Do you have any questions of what's presented? You think, this is what we're working from, the staff's report, and you can see the timeframe and leniency and how finally we come to this day.
Yeah, so there, there are some comments we have about the presentation that was given, would it be better? Or would you guys prefer if I first give our statement?
Give this statement, and then if you wanna challenge what we are asking, it's fine.
Sure, okay, so, so then I'll start with, uh, with the statement I prepared. Um, I actually, I have some copies of the letter from August second, if you guys don't have them, just 'cause I'm gonna refer to it a couple times.
Is the letter written to us from your-
No, this was, uh, a letter written to us.
The letter we wrote to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, uh, first, I'd like to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to discuss the property today.
Have you been a part of this before?
A lot less so until now.
I was gonna say, I've been here thirty, fifty years.
More so just hearing about things a little bit on the side.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing your questions.
Okay.
Uh, and any questions you may have, and also, please excuse, uh, any lack of preparedness we may have, just because we were notified of this discussion tonight, uh, around one P.M. today. So, accounting for our time to prepare and our drive time, uh, I, I did the most I could. Just for some background, I actually recently left, uh, the company I was with, uh, to come join and help spearhead and oversee this project. to come join and help spearhead and oversee this project, and make sure that we are making progress moving forward. And we're here today in an attempt to work collaboratively, to address concerns about the property in good faith, and seeking some clarity as far as what needs to be done with the property. I'd first like to address that, per the letter dated August second, we should have until a minimum October second, which actually you guys did address. And from reading that letter, there, there is also a mention of a ninety day period, which we at first thought was referring to giving us time until November second, and we asked for clarification in an email response, and didn't get that. So we've been working with the October second date in mind, of course.
I think that's wise.
Yeah. And I mean, right now, we're still in September, so we felt like maybe it was a little bit early, but I understand and I respect the process that you guys have to go through, so we get it.
A fifteen year process, by the way.
Yeah, but actually, one thing I will note is, we didn't have the property until two thousand thirteen, and the first notice of violation as per this is twenty sixteen, but.
Oh, that's still eleven years, you know.
I, I, yeah, I understand, I understand. But I will address that a bit, at least in this most recent, you know, session, I guess I'll call it. We've been persistently attempting to get clarity as far as exactly what work needs to be done to bring the property into compliance. However, our repeated attempts have been consistently turned away. In two thousand thirteen, when discussing the property with Mr. Eckert, it's my understanding that there were clear instructions as far as what needed to be done to bring the property to compliance. And we were told verbally at the end of that, you know, discussion, that we had addressed everything. But despite asking for a written notice of, I guess, clearance, and that things had been taken care of, we didn't receive one. And the perm, the, the status of the permission of the trailer, if you could go to the, the overhead chat.
The trailer with the illegal appendage on it?
The, the, I guess what's referenced is Area Six. The permit status of that trailer wasn't brought up as an issue at the time in two thousand thirteen. And it, there was only ref, there was only a reference made to an overhang on it, which we have now gotten rid of. And the trailer status as a permitted structure was also not in question at first in two thousand twenty-three, in November of two thousand twenty-three. Although, although we've not been getting clear and specific instructions as far as what exactly needs to be taken care of here, we're still making progress with the property. Ultimately, our goals are aligned to beautify the city and help improve the area. And I mean, so far, we've not been alerted to any specific health and safety issues or building code violations that require repairs. And the only mention of health and safety issues was within a statement in that letter, I believe, on page three, which actually was just a statement saying that the subdivision describes physical conditions that cause blight as buildings in which it is unsafe or healthy for persons to live or work. It says these conditions may be caused by serious building code violations, serious dilapidation and deterioration caused by long-term neglect. But like I mentioned, we have not been given any formal notice of actual specific building code violations, so there hasn't been anything clear for us to address. And actually, some of the pictures that were shown today, and some of the statements, today was our first time, while sitting in this room, hearing of them, seeing of them, at least specifically in regards to this code enforcement case, and abatement case. And yeah, so like I said, that letter neglects to include what violations are posing an immediate threat to public health, and without proper guidance, I, I don't see how we can be expected to solve the problems that we aren't aware of, although now we have been made a little bit more aware. And until this letter, most issues with the property seem to be based on appearance. But we were told in our previous June nineteenth meeting with Mr. Campan and Rowena, and I believe David Fawcett, that the solution to the remaining issues that we had would depend on the building officials' opinion and review. And we were repeatedly promised that we would be getting more information from the building officials' inspection, yet we've still not gotten anything extra. And as they mentioned, that inspection was in June, and we, I believe, June twenty seventh. And despite repeatedly asking, still nothing, no help. At the end of the day, this is a project like any other. Projects have budgets, plans, goals, and a process. And we've been continuously making progress on bringing the property up to standards. We actually just had an asbestos report done, which showed that there was some material with asbestos on the property. And our goal is to ensure that any cleanup or demolition that may be required can be done properly. And we were actually just given approval, as they mentioned, on September sixth to install new fencing around the property, which once installed, will be followed by resealing the property. And we also, we've also scheduled the civil engineer to come by the property on the eighteenth to inspect the buildings and let us know what needs to be done per code, as we were denied access to any of the building officials' commentary from his inspection. And we've been in the process of making repairs with much more precision than ever before, in hopes that it will meet and maybe even exceed the proper standards. Our goal is to understand and see a clear and specific path forward with the goal of achieving a sustainable plan that will bring the property into compliance. By doing guesswork based on dictionary definitions, and what a reasonable person, quote unquote, may think, the odds are that if we pulled even fifty different people off the street, that we'd probably get close to fifty differing opinions. So ultimately, the proper path to a solution will involve a clear and sustainable path forward, and we've been making progress to ensure that everything is done legally, and with any and all required permits and approvals. Since these pictures seem to be not properly presenting the property, I do have some pictures on my iPad that I could show you guys of what it looks like, at least two weeks ago. I took the photos. And yeah, because, I mean, not only the letter, the pictures that were in those letters, but also the pictures presented today are not accurate to what the property looks like now. And yeah, I, I'd like to, on the record, request that we're given a time at least to properly discuss and set a clear path forward together. Because ultimately, like I said, we have the same goal in mind, and we're looking to work together, cooperate, to make the progress that's needed. Thank you again for the time, and I hope that with your support, we can please continue to work together with clarity, productively through a transparent process to achieve our shared goal of beautifying the city.
Mr. Mayor, before we go down further this rabbit hole, I'd like the two speakers to be placed under oath and our penalty of perjury, so that we make sure that the record's clear. According to the appellate, or according to the order that was issued by the administrative hearing officer, the gentleman that just spoke was present at the time that evidence was provided, and was provided a copy of the, the abatement order. So if we want to go down this rabbit hole, I'd ask that they be placed under oath by the city clerk.
Right, so we're gonna swear you in.
Sure.
All you can do is raise your right hand, and the city clerk will say the oath.
Do you solemnly state that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the city council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you mentioned that you're here to start a new project on this property.
I mean.
Did I catch that right?
Not exactly.
All right, what did you say?
Maybe I came across a little wrong, but what I meant was that I'm, I'm helping to join in completing this project of bringing things to compliance, exactly.
So do you have plans to build something on this project?
Yeah, ultimately, that is the goal, and it's been the goal for years, so.
All right, now, that new project will incorporate the structures that we now see that we're asking to be abated. You're gonna make that part of your new project?
No, 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 no.
Then why are you fighting so hard to keep them?
Well, it's not that we're fighting so hard to keep them.
Well, it sounds that way.
For the taxes, sir, for the taxes, you know, because when, when you come, you know, and we put a plan, the project, for the demo, we get credit for the property taxes.
Well, you're gonna pay less taxes on a property that's vacant of everything. A clear lot's gonna generate a lower tax bill than that.
My lot is not vacant, I pull a permit under my license to handle my business over there. They give me the license.
All right, so which, which of the buildings are your offices?
The office, the building that was from here.
Is it that one possibly?
No, sir, this one, this one is a chicken coop, you know, all these pictures is from the old time, it's not from now. You know, they could take pictures and see, you know, that there are.
Is that your, is that your bathroom you're using?
No, sir. We have a.
Now, I, if we look at your current pictures, they're gonna show something much improved from what I see here. Is that what you're telling us?
There is a storage only, you know, that we was, you know, what I, what I asked the Mr. Campan and the planning department, that the, all the building, ABCD, you know, they be used as storage, and only the trailer, it be used as a office. And the trailer have a permit, I believe on two thousand sixteen, also they pull a permit for electrical on that unit, and they've, for, you know, they did a job over, that they work, you know, and the city give them permission. For two thousand sixteen, the, the trailer that they say is not approved, and it's not supposed to be there. But if you go on the.
You have a permit for that trailer, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir, we have.
Well, yeah, we've seen, we've seen permits that were issued for the trailer, which lead us to believe that it is permitted. However, they were kind of batted away by Mr. Campan with almost not really looking at them too much. And ultimately, they were for utilities, and what he said was that he's not sure that the utility permits could be showing that the, that the property was permitted to be there. But we also have seen, we have satellite images that show the property there as early as nineteen seventy, and some of the permits that we have seen do date back to nineteen forty-eight, which according to at least public record is when these buildings were built.
Did you buy that property from Reno Rotini?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he was a friend of ours. Good man. Is there any way staff can present what they have as photos on our screen?
And put the tablet on the overhead? I don't know if it'll work.
Uh, sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while, while Mr. Saez is looking at, at that, let me just point out that tonight's agenda item has nothing to do with whether or not this is a public nuisance or not. It's already been determined to be a public nuisance by an independent administrative hearing officer. The order has already been issued, and I can quote it, because I have it right here in front of me, it's part of your staff report, it's in the agenda packet. Mr., the speaker's complaint that he was notified until today about this meeting, he wasn't entitled to notice. We provided him with courtesy notice to let him know that it was on tonight's agenda, and that he could show up and provide public comment if he chose. But this is not a hearing about whether or not it's a public nuisance. It is a public nuisance. It's been determined to be a public nuisance.
So what we're, what we're here tonight is, that's the question I was gonna ask these gentlemen. We're here not what should be there, shouldn't be there, or what was permitted, that's, we're pass at. The judge ordered an abatement, the judge, or the, the party that sent, that gave this abatement order has already decided with our evidence that this stuff's gotta go. And we're here to decide whether to go. You've had ninety days and then another sixty days from that, am I correct? To do this, and now it's three weeks, three weeks before October sixth, I mean, the second. And it's, 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 the time has gone, and now you're here in the eleventh hour.
We have been working on the property.
But if you can get it done in three weeks, fine, but, you know, the wheels are gonna go, I don't know how this council's gonna vote, but we're here to decide on the abatement order to go forward. Because of the track record with this property, delayed and delayed, and excuse and excuse, and us being nice here and there, and whatever, the time, the clock has expired. This is, is an ugly piece of property in the city of Bellflower, and we've been trying to fix it for fifteen years. And now we're here, gonna do something about it tonight, or at least we're gonna try. And that's what we're here for. So we're not talking about what should be and what shouldn't be there, that's already been decided.
I mean, I will say kind of vaguely. And despite asking really multiple times for, you know, more specific direction as far as the repairs that need to be made and things like that, we've just gotten the vague, like, make them look nice again.
So were you at that court, or the proceeding, was it a court proceeding, or when the?
It was, it was an administrative hearing. I was there.
And you, and, and you said in the first, before you swore in, that you didn't know anything until today.
No, no, okay, then, then the way I, the way I responded, I, I may have misspoke, I may have misunderstood.
But that goes hand in hand with everything that we've known. Up here, we, we get all your emails, staff's emails, everybody, and it just goes on and on and on, it never stops.
I, I will, I will say.
And now we're, we're done, October second, we're gonna decide on October second. What's gonna happen?
Gotcha, I, I will say, my, my understanding is if I was like very hands-on with the project until now, which in that hearing, I, I wasn't. Really, at the time, I was more there at the hearing to make sure that things were clear and that communication was clear between my dad and everybody else who was present. Because, I mean, he's, his, his English is not a hundred percent.
But if you were, but if you were there at that abatement order, you must have had something that came from the judge or the court? Administrative hearing is what it was, administrative hearing. There was documents and what said had to be done, right?
Yes, and, but one, there's, there's a couple of things I, I do wanna say about that hearing. Up until the hearing, our understanding was that we were coming to meet with the city council to discuss it. Like, we didn't know that it was gonna be something in front of a judge making a decision on the spot, so we came pretty unprepared because it wasn't clear to us. And I will also say that, while there was discussion prior to that hearing between everybody about, a, a, I guess I'll say a rough idea of what needed to be done, but I use the word rough very loosely, we weren't provided more specific examples despite asking for them until that hearing. So I will say, it is true, there were some more specific examples that were provided there, but there are even more that we are seeing for the, seeing and hearing for the first time today. So ultimately, I mean, if we can set.
You just said you were gonna scrape the property here a little while ago, and, and.
No, well, we're gonna, we're gonna reseal the property once we install the fence.
No, scrape it, saw the fence and scrape it, the buildings were gonna come down. That's what you said.
That's the eventual goal, but I mean, we need to get, we would need to get that development approved.
Okay.
Right?
Well, the goal is to get, get that stuff taken care of before October second.
Okay, so, so I, I guess as far as setting a, a path and like a clear understanding, is the solution to that, to remove?
You're on a clock, your clock's gonna expire October second. We're here to decide to go forward, we're getting our ducks in a row, so when October second comes, and you haven't done it, we're gonna continue.
I understand, I just wanna, what, what I'm trying to understand is what it should look like once.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry for interrupting, let me just read from the order. The conditions described in findings two dash nine above constitute a public nuisance on the property subject to abatement, including without limitation, removal of all unpermitted uses on the property, removal of all blighted and unpermitted structures from the property, removal or elimination of blight permitted structures exterior siding painting condition, elimination of any polluting substances from possible runoff into storm drains, elimination of stained and blighted lot surfaces, bring all fencing and signage into compliance with the municipal code, generally bring entire property into conformity with area standards. The city is not a general contractor. The property owner is responsible for coming in with plans that conforms with this order and executing them before October second, period. Mr. Campan, I know, has provided at least four emails to this individual and to his father and to the property owner about what that means. And there are other properties in town where they've complied with the municipal code. I can read those too.
What I, what I will say is those, those emails, a lot of them are us asking for clarity.
This is not a debate anymore, this is not a debate. This is not a debate, this is not a hearing, and you're absolutely making it a debate. And my patience is at an end with this gentleman. So I'm happy to continue on at the direction of the city council, but the agenda item is in front of you, the public comment is way past three minutes. I'm happy to do whatever the city council would like to do.
Okay, so we're not gonna be, I, I'd guess. Okay, um, so we're not gonna be, I I'd guess the pictures that I asked for are irrelevant, these brought, and, oh, there they are, okay.
Yeah.
All right, next.
Yeah, I, these are the pictures I have, I wasn't able to make it today to take newer, more updated photos to bring. I'm sorry, just with the late notice that we were given. Uh, I mean, the the only other notice we were given prior to today at one P M was ten days ago, saying that in the coming weeks, it will be coming before the city council. And that was very vague, and I, only ten days passed, not even two weeks. So we, we didn't know to expect it today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other testimony? Is, you, I've gave, you got more than three minutes?
Uh, I mean, he's made it clear that he's, he's at his end and he doesn't really want us to speak anymore.
No, I I'll let you speak, but I wanna conclude this because I'm way past the three-minute measurement.
I mean, I feel like we've said our piece.
No, I think you have.
Actually, I think there are some comments, you wanted to make, uh, responses regarding allegations made in the, in the presentation about, uh, lack of getting proper permitting for capping and removing trail, capping, uh, utilities when we were moving trailers, things like that.
Everything I did by law, I put all the permits, you know, that necessary to cap, including the mobile home that it was approved on the property.
You capped all the utilities?
Yes, sir, I did.
Right, and that's, you're in the right direction.
And just the point of that was to say that we did do them with permits, although, uh, what was presented that was that we did them without permits.
Okay.
They request me to remove a mobile home over there that it was approved with the, uh, with the city that it was approved to be there. And Mr. Campan asked me to remove it, and I removed it, you know, and after that, I find out, you know, oh, we have a permit for it. But I did it, you know, just to keep, you know, Mr. Campan happy. I tried to fully cooperate, you know? My plans for the fence, it couldn't get approved, you know, almost one month, you know, that I was running to make it approved. Why? I tried to put five feet, uh, from the property line, the fences, including landscaping over there, but, uh, and they asked me, you know, to go ahead and pull, uh, get a civil engineering approval. So I went hire civil engineer, I paid them, you know, to create it, you know, the light line site and submitted to the city, and in the end, they said, we're not going to approve this plan. I came back again, you know, walking to the city and asking, please, you know, what else I have to do? And Mrs. Rowena helped me a lot, and she said, you know, just put the ten-foot set back so you could get that proof right away. I put the plans again and we submitted. She give me, you know, the time, you know, go ahead, you know, I need to go ahead and check, you know, what I can do, talk with all the agencies, public work, fire department, everyone, and you could come back on Friday. I came back on Friday and we got the stamp approval. I put the order for the fence, I have the company that they're going to seal the property. I could seal the property in coming this week. But they told me, put your fences or your drilling that you have to do, then we come back, you know, and do the sealed, you know, the property. So I have the people that they could do it. Regarding demo, you know, if the chicken coop don't look good that I have to demo, you know, I have no problem to demo it. I took asbestos report, and yes, we have asbestos, so we have to take care of that, you know, yes, I will do it. If the city look, you know, that we have to demo it, I keep the building just only for tax purposes for the new developments, so we could get credit for it.
Or for storage during the project.
Okay.
That I have, you know, that I put my, you know, I put business license on this property that I would run, you know, my construction, you know, and we closed the, with the fence, everything looked nice and good, you know, but, you know, I'm here, you know, to help and work with the city. I requested many times, please, provide me with the inspection on June twenty-seven with the inspector that he was over here sitting, you know, I asked him, you know, just provide me with that inspection report. I have no problem, whatever you guys want me to do, I will do it, but I never received nothing back. Regarding also that you guys saying, you know, that the ninety days, you know, it was and passed, and then we give you, make a favor and continued sixty days. It wasn't that, you know, it was that the hearing officer make a mistake on the paper. And when we submitted to the city, you know, that, and Mr. Campan, what was the mistake?
Then, then we got reissued an, an updated, uh, letter.
And for that time, you know, it take, you know, over like two and a half, three months, you know, just to get that approval, you know, I mean, the hearing officer.
Just to get that corrected.
All right, well, I, I think you've said everything we need to hear, so, uh, thank you for coming in, we'll go from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else wanna give testimony on this project? I think none.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Before you do that, I have, I have a question.
Follow right ahead.
Our city attorney, so, um, first of all, I would like, I would encourage the property owners to do everything possible that they can, everything they they need to do to comply with the abatement order of August second, of May thirty-first. I mean, to me, I'm not the contractor, but I can pretty much understand what the order was. Like, remove all blighted and unpermitted structures, I mean, they should, they should know what's not permitted. So even a layman's person can interpret all this order, number one. So in the unlikely event, because I'm giving the benefit of the doubt, in the unlikely event that come October second at five P M, it wasn't completed, so October third, you're gonna appear before a judge, um, with a proposed abatement order. For clarification, will they be notified of that?
We try to give them a courtesy notice, legally speaking, there's no requirement that we give them notice, but we will give them notice from the stamp, and we always have with regard to abatement warrants.
So if they're present at the court hearing, will they have an opportunity to challenge the proposed abatement order?
They will.
They will, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. So they have an opportunity to, between now and October second, first, to comply, and after that, to challenge the abatement order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll, uh, I wanna speak to that a little bit too. On the document that was handed to us today, uh, by the owner, um, and the owner's son, it, uh, that was originally issued in May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and then again, final notice on issue second. It clearly states, uh, remove or eliminate of blight of permitted structures, exterior siding, paint, and condition. These three structures designated as areas A, B, and C in Exhibit One remain dilapidated and are blight on the city. You must either demolish and remove these structures or obtain necessary permits and approvals from the city to rehabilitate all the structures you wish to remain. If you go down to Exhibit One, you notice where it says A, B, and C, I mean, it is clearly marked out and boxed. I I just, I, I see the pictures from tonight, and I wanna have sympathy, I really do. But I see the pictures from tonight, and all it is is paint lips, you know, I think, uh, one of you says this well all the time, you know, it's the lipstick on a pig. It it is just, that's what it is. And so I think there's been ample time, um, to, and and it's clear. I, I don't know how clear our staff could have really been with this. Uh, they provided examples of other properties with no blight, and so I, again, I wanna have sympathy, but i- it's just been, um, a long time coming at this point.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
To adopt resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-four, the resolution adopted pursuant to Public Contracts Code two zero one six eight, finding that an emergency exists with a city authorization contract without the need for bidding pursuant to two zero one six eight, the Bellflower Municipal Code, chapters three point two eight and eight point three six, along with doubling the two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by council members Victor Sanchez. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Santaynez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, moving on to consent calendar. Anybody have anything they'd like to pull on the consent calendar? Is there anybody recusing from anything on this consent calendar?
They come clean. Move the consent calendar, not seeing any.
Second. All right, we have a move, a motion by Ray Dutton, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Bellflower, supported by Victor Sanchez, council member of the city of Bellflower, please pull the council.
Councilmember Santaynez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Council reports. Ms. Morse, have you anything to offer tonight?
I do not.
Okay, moving on to Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
I do not.
Bringing over here my, Mr. Santaynez.
Oh, just real quick, Mayor, thank you so much. Um, uh, the mayor, councilmember Sanchez, and I attended the, um, uh, orientation or first meeting of the Implantadores program. I was very impressed with the attendance, I think they had close to thirty participants in the program. So again, kudos to Economic Development Department for pushing this program and also for, um, Mrs. Monica Robles, uh, for teaching these students how to start, fund, and expand, grow their business in the city of Bellflower. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sanchez?
No comment.
All right, so, uh, school's back in session, be careful as you monitor the streets, those kids are on bikes, they're on skateboards, and you really never, and really, watch out for the electric bikes.
Yeah.
They just whip in and out of traffic like they're meant to be there, so be careful of that. And, uh, this meeting's adjourned. Madam City Clerk, what's our September?
Twenty-third.
September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, five thirty, for adjourn.